Ready? Good. Yes, we're live.
Okay, we're back in session on the special meeting of the city council. Is there anything to report out, Mr. City?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session to consider one item, a liability claim filed by Ronald McCray. Directional is provided to staff and no reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, then we will adjourn the special meeting and I'll call the regular meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Approval of the agenda, are there any changes in our agenda that you'd like to make? Okay, hearing.
I want to pull something from the consent calendar when the time is right.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, well, then we'll approve the agenda as submitted and then we'll... Okay, we're then on consent calendar. Which item did you want to pull, Susan?
Item D on the statement of investment policy.
Okay. Okay, we'll pull that. Are there any other requests? If not, do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, any objections? I hear none. Consent calendar is approved with the exception of item D. Susan, go ahead.
Well, I wanted to just read the statement submitted by Michelle Ellison, who's a member of the Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee. Has Bonnie disappeared?
Yeah, I'm back.
All right. And then I want, what I want, I'm going to read it. I might summarize some of it. It's not that long. And then I wanted to see if we could add some wording into the investment policy. You know, I want to make it as simple as possible. So here's what Michelle wrote, and I'm in agreement with this. Regarding the investment policy, while according to the staff report, the city doesn't currently have direct investments in fossil fuel companies, we can and still should adopt a resolution similar to Resolution 1810 adopted in 2018 prohibiting the investment, the nuclear weapons to prohibit future investments in fossil fuel companies. And so this is referenced in Exhibit A, page six, item nine, if you want to go to that page. And it's called ineligible investments. Additionally, while according to the staff report, the city only has money in CDs, the fossil fuel divestment movement includes divesting from banks that fund fossil fuel projects. Most of the major financial institutions like Bank of America, JP Morgan Chase, Wells Fargo, et cetera, are heavily funding fossil fuel projects. So if the city CDs or other savings are currently at these banks, the city should look into alternatives like local credit unions or community banks. So I just wanted to see if we could come up with a couple of paragraphs stating that it's our, you know, that we don't invest in anything related to fossil fuels. And again, this is a cumulative action. This is something other cities are doing. I know that our funding might be small, but couldn't we do, make a similar statement as is shown on page, at the top of page seven? You know, where it says that we, that we don't invest in nuclear weapons or the components of nuclear weapons? Can't we add a sentence even maybe under that heading? Eligible investments under... James or Matt?
Susan, did you check or does anybody know how many banking institutions we have access to that don't in some fashion have money in gas and oil? Who would we, do we know the ones that have been certified as already having decided that they don't put their money into it? So we would know where we would be going with our money.
Yeah, and that's really what it boiled down to. And we talked to the treasurer, we talked to the finance director, and then the budget committee was that it's going to take a significant amount of research at a time when we don't have a lot of funding to invest and we have some, you know, other immediate pending financial needs that those positions are going to be looking at. Like, you know, we've talked about the line of credit. We're still working on that, which we do not have yet. So it just, that was part of the discussion. The quick answer was that every major bank that we looked at and including the banks that, you know, probably the majority of people use have some sort of investment that would likely disqualify them under this. So it would have to be a local credit union. So it would require some research to determine that.
Well, could we postpone this to our next meeting before we adopt the investment policy? And just have somebody do some internet research? I would imagine any institution who has done this would be, I guess, wanting to keep their horn and be proud of it. And they would say, yeah, we accept or encourage donation or deposits from people who are investing for the social agenda.
I could investigate with Michelle. Because if other institutions are doing this, there must be an alternative.
Okay, well, we have to look at and know what the implications are as to what it means. Other than the symbolism that we're not getting rid of all of our involvement with oil and gas, even though I'd like to see that happen at some point. But we have cars, trucks, trolleys. Once we go down that road, why don't we give staff two weeks? And maybe even Michelle can do some research and tell us which institutions would be eligible under this change in policy. Bill?
Yeah. No, I would not, I think one of the key things is we are so overburdening staff right now. I would not want to give this as a big chore or errand for the staff to do right now. They got their hands full. I have no problem with councilperson Francina and the climate committee member, Michelle, looking at this, but I wouldn't want to put a big burden on staff right now.
No, I agree with that.
I'm fine with that. I can research.
Okay, let's do that and give it two more weeks. Then we can talk further. So any objection to this being postponed till the July meeting? If not, so ordered. Okay.
Just to let you know, three weeks for what it's worth. Our next meeting's in three weeks.
Okay, well, thank you, keeper of the calendar. Yeah, the next, the July meeting, whenever that is.
Yeah, very important job I have, Mayor Protem. I keep checking.
I'm glad.
Good to see you studied your duties.
Yeah, make yourself useful, Ryan. That's good. Public hearings, okay. We now on item number two, which is the fiscal year budget review and adoption. James?
Thank you. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. I have a couple of slides, nothing too major.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes, Randy?
Prior to the demonstration, can I just, can I make a simple comment to James and staff? We have asked over the years, let's say the last five years for me for sure, about a simplified budget, you know, presentation and something that is easy for the community to understand, follow, comprehend, and relate to. And I just wanted to say this was by far one of the easiest reads that I've had in five years regarding the budget and the budget process and how the monies are being spent or allocated in our community. And I just wanted to say, and I'm sure you all would agree, thank you, James, and thanks to the staff. Thanks to our new budget director, but you guys did one heck of a job. Just an incredible...
I second the motion, Randy.
Hey, you're here.
You had me worried there for a minute. I thought we were talking about having a half a dozen more public workshops and I'm...
Well, you did a thorough job, Mayor. Very thorough.
Okay, that's, yeah, thank you for the comments. I think that they are well deserved.
Yeah, I'll take a motion to adopt. No, I'm just kidding. I'm not going off that easy, I guess. I will try to keep it fairly high level, though, you know. We, one point, and this will come up later on an item we're going to talk about that we had a meeting with the county on is we are on our fourth version of the budget since March, which has been challenging for our finance department. They've been, you know, running ragged and they've been here in the office working throughout this entire shutdown and everything. So I do want to recognize them. But this is our fourth version of the budget. It has been a challenge because we originally started out with kind of the budget story being that with the passing of Measure C, the city was looking good and we were going to catch up on deferred maintenance and make service enhancements. And that was the budget that we proposed on March 13th, where we showed, you know, an increase in revenues and an increase in expenditures. And then April and May, we reduced the $600,000 in service enhancements back to about the level where they currently are. And then we found that we still had a, with the updated revenue projections coming in, that we still had a $946,000 deficit. Because the revenues are going to be impacted so much, as, you know, obviously everybody's aware, we're in the midst of a historic shutdown. And even as things open, it's looking positive, but we aren't going to be back to normal, you know, in the next couple of months. And so that leads us to where we're at today. We had come back to council last meeting and said that we had identified reductions such as a three-month hiring freeze, a reduction in community organization funding back to the prior year level, and then some deferrals of some projects, vehicle replacement and the employment benefit payments. And we said with those things, we were expecting to still have a short or a small, smaller deficit. We went back and we met with the budget committee. One thing we wanted to talk about closely with them was we had thought property tax was going to fall dramatically. We had included in our last budget a 12% reduction. We are not seeing that that's the case. And the county also sent some revised estimates showing that they're actually expecting property tax to be pretty stable. So at our last budget committee meeting, we recommended adding that property tax revenue back in. So other revenues, as proposed, other revenues are expected to drop, but property tax is expected to be on pace with where we thought it would be initially. And so that helped a little bit because then that means that that helps the balance and we wouldn't have to reduce the full 20% TOT transfer that we had previously discussed. So the budget before you today includes that increase to the property tax that we reviewed with the budget committee. And then it reduced the deferral of the transfer to come back balanced. Obviously, a big question mark for us long term is that's still not building up our reserve. But on one hand, you know, in the worst of the epidemic would not be the point where we would typically be building that up. So we show that we would project a balanced budget next year. One piece of information we've talked about a few times is that we are using reserves this year, this current fiscal year that we are in, we are using our reserves to continue to provide those key services to residents. But we are estimating that those reserves will go from 3.4 million to 2.3 million as of the end of this month. That's not sustainable. So then it comes down to finding some reductions or continuing to use the reserves and potentially draining those. And so rather than continuing to use the reserves, what we tried to do is put a budget together that would balance that out so we don't continue to drain those reserves. As I just said, most revenues next year are expected to decrease. TOTs, I know yesterday the inn reopened and that is something that a lot of people are talking about. And a few people have emailed me or, you know, commented to me that that's, you know, the cure. Now, but the flip side of that is they're going to open at a reduced capacity. And also there's still some limitations on, they need to leave rooms vacant for certain periods of time. So one guest checks out, room needs to be vacant for a certain period of time before somebody can check in. So it just seems like, you know, that capacity, that TOT keeps getting cut into fractions still. So we're not going to see that come back to normal anytime soon. Sales tax is going to be down. I think we found that it should have been down 4% for the first quarter, which only included one month of the shutdown. But because of that deferment that the state offered, businesses, small businesses, we're actually expecting to be down 26%. And this, kind of the scary sobering thing about that is that is January through March and this started mid-March. So just that two weeks in March has reduced our sales tax revenue 26% for that period. So April to June is not going to be positive.
Did the state exempt them or did just defer the payment?
They deferred it one year, but...
So the money actually come in at some point? Is it a cash flow or is it an actual loss of revenue?
It's cash flow, but we do expect there to be some loss because it's, you know, some businesses will likely go out before they repay. So there's going to be some reduction. But for the most part, it's a cash flow issue. And then, as we mentioned, so then the only revenue that's looking positive is property tax. So we've refined the budget to note that. Also of note, that's important, is Measure C did go into effect June 1st. And so we should officially be collecting it at this point, which is going to be key to our long term and the capital improvement projects and not having to defer those projects in difficult times like we would have in the past. So it's, it will be an important part. It just, we, this dampened our enthusiasm a little bit, but it's going to be an important part moving forward. And I think the last thing we wanted to say, just to, to kind of set the table is is this will be a year where we will make adjustments. We're already planning for an October revise. I think we should expect it. We should expect that, you know, if things change and businesses open quicker or slower than we're expecting, we're going to come back and make adjustments to the budget. Right now is where it's difficult to project right now and every city is going to struggle with that. So we've, we've put together a fairly conservative budget. If things continue to reopen as they, as they have been fairly quickly over the last couple of months, you know, the budget is fair, but we expect that some things will change and we'll come back and make adjustments as needed. And one of those things actually I can mention, too, I know it'll be something that's talked about here is we have started the conversation with the sheriff's department about their contract and looking at that. So, you know, there will be some upcoming discussions to be had. And quickly, so with Measure C funding this year, this year being the first year, we're expecting, the current budget projects about $1.5 million in Measure C funds for this year. These projects here are where that money is focused. Road rehabilitation, we said we were going to try to put an emphasis on that. So this year would have been a year we wouldn't have paved normally. But this year, even in challenging times with Measure C funding, that should give us the opportunity to pave, to do some significant paving. We're also looking at some Libby Park improvements for approximately $112,000. The Sarzati Park light poles that we had talked about a few, a couple of months back for $58,000. Portable speed radar signed for $8,000. Parking lot improvements for $56,000. And then the Stewart Canyon restoration project that we received an $800,000 grant for. We've budgeted some, some here for some of the staff time for that. And then City Hall repairs approximately $79,000. So this slide, essentially what we're trying to, you know, show is that the impact Measure C will have on us even in a, you know, a tough year. So on good years, we really should be able to leverage that money even for more projects. Quick question before you go to the next slide? Yes. If it wasn't for Measure C, would we be only forecasting 1 million flat? If it wasn't for Measure C, well, so the $1.5 million is all Measure C funds. Right, but I mean, if it wasn't increased to 15%, then it would only have been 1 million we would have been getting. So is the, is that, is the 1.5 million that extra 5% or is it the whole extra 15%? No, so the 10% current tax that goes to the general fund totals about $3 million. And then the... This is the, this is the new, okay, thank you. So the additional 5% will total $1.5 million that we are earmarking for capital improvement projects. And, and those, the list of projects that we all talked about when the, when the, when it got put on the ballot.
Can I ask something, please?
Yeah.
Could, could you add two items to this list or could it fall under one of these categories? And I've said this before, we desperately need benches. You know, there's not a single bench between the trolley stop in front of Nordoff and Elro Blar. And almost every evening and sometimes in the morning, I see people walking to work on that stretch. They're tired when they're, you know, and there's other places in the city where it's just inhumane. You know, considering the number of people who are walking or taking the trolley not to have some benches. I can't advocate for that enough. And the other thing is that I think it's a shame that we don't have shade over the trolley stop in front of the bank. Because, you know, during the heat of day, I see elderly people, all different, you know, families will be sitting there in the heat. It just seems like if we can do all this, that somehow we can find, those are very humble requests compared to this. And we just, I think, feel like we need to add that to the list.
And I will say the, so I've talked to Public Works and we believe we have some benches that we could put out currently. So we've talked about starting to roll those out. I'm not sure exactly how many they were going to go check into that. So that should be something we can at least start addressing. The shade at the trolley stop, I don't think is currently included, but we, if council desires, we can, we can include that. I don't have a quote offhand for that.
We, James, when you say we have, you know, the budget is balanced, you're saying that we are living within what we believe to be our income for the next year. And it's not truly balanced in the sense that we're deferring obligations that are just piling up. We're just not making the expenditure on capital, repair and capital improvement. My understanding of this list, the last time we talked about it, with the exception possibly of the Sarzati light poles, I think those are under contract, right?
Yes.
Okay, that the rest of this stuff, we haven't, we haven't obligated ourselves to.
Right.
And so when we do the October revise or September, October, after we get a little more experience as to what's happening to our revenues and the priorities could be changed, Susan, I think by moving some of this money around, if it was to be determined by council that they, what you're just mentioning has a higher priority than some of the stuff that's on here. But I, I would recommend to the council, the budget will not be balanced if we start to add stuff without taking anything away. This, this was approved or recommended by the budget committee based upon that kind of, you know, review of revenues and expenditures. So for us to be deciding to add anything, that's not a good time. If we've lived this long without it, even though there were these things, I think we should try to get through at least the next quarter to see where we are because some of these things we may not even have any money for.
But for that very reason, why can't we put that on the list? James can get a quote. That trolley stop is part of client mitigation. Those are people that are not driving.
Yes, but every, Susan, this is a budget hearing and every thing that we put on the list goes into the budget. Whereas if you put it on a list of desirable things, and you brought it up, there's some good ideas here that in, in the fall, after we see what's happened to our sales tax and all our other revenues, then we might say, let's do, as we have done in the past, trade something out for it rather than add something to it. Because if you add something to it, the expectation is we're going to go ahead and spend the money and that means we're not balanced anymore.
And I will say, I believe that actually is on the five-year CIP. It might not have been for this year. So when we come back to, to your point, when we come back in October, we can review those projects. I, one point I, that I think is worth mentioning is with hotels reopening this week, we will not receive any Measure C funding or TOT until July 31st at the earliest. And so we aren't going to have this funding, you know, anytime soon. And this is, you know, over the entire year. So we have some time until we start working on these projects as it takes some time to collect the funds and...
And while we're waiting to collect the funds, we're going to be living off of our reserves, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so everybody needs to understand that that money is not just sitting there idle. We, we're going to have, that's our cash, our capital, working capital. Randy, you had your hand up?
I just had a, you know, in the same discussion, I was talking to James earlier today. I'd like to bring back to council sometime soon. And that's a different type of discussion regarding Measure C funding and TOT funding. Mayor, you brought it up that the last, you know, more than once, that the 20% that we moved to Fund 31, part of it covers road and sidewalk and curb and, and things of that nature, things that are technically earmarked for Measure C funding only. And then you said the other half goes into facility restoration, maintenance and things of that nature. I'd like to see us have a discussion about where we take all of Measure C money and earmark it for. Parking lot, lighting, and streets, curbs, gutters and things of that nature. And we just allocate Measure C funding for that specifically, then we come back to TOT. And now we can earmark specific needs of the community such as Susan's benches or picnic tables in parks. We can actually now identify what those needs are and clearly transfer monies over just to cover that. And then the last thing in it is I, we don't have anywhere in any of these discussions about how we're going to repay back our reserves. And I'd like to see us start putting a greater percentage of the TOT that we used to fund 31 out of back into the reserves. But I'd like to have that conversation sooner or later. Obviously not tonight, but I think it's a worthwhile conversation.
Right now, the challenge, I agree with you, Randy, but the challenge right now is to not further deplete the reserve as opposed to increase it. But we, the sooner we get the turnaround, I think we should be budgeting, you know, that what they always say on those ads about, first thing we, in personal finance, pay yourself, put some money in your savings account. That's what we should be doing, too. But unfortunately, with the pandemic, we have no idea what our income is going to be. Or we have a poor idea. So, okay, James, sorry, I, we cut you off.
That's, yeah, that's all, good point. And we can, we can come back to talk about the Measure C transfer, or the TOT transfer in Measure C and how that's apportioned.
Is this a good time to break and take public comment?
I have two slides, but, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I, okay. So quickly, I think one of the last kind of rounds of decisions that we have to make, and it's something that, you know, the budget committee and staff have not typically weighed in on, is the community organization funding. We've talked about this a few times. Last year, we had $231,000 in the budget and we provided facilities to both the Ojai Museum and the help of Ojai at some, which has some value. This year, what's included in the budget is $114,000 because we took it back to the prior year amount. And then also the Arts Commission's reduced $35,000 request is included in there. Prior year had $40,000 in there, so since they reduced it, we had included that in the proposed budget. And then the facilities for the museum and the help of Ojai are also still obviously included in our, in our current budget. So essentially, there's $114,000 that council could discuss how to distribute it if they desire to distribute it. So that's one of the pending items and that's the end of the presentation.
Okay, do we have any public comments, the general ones that don't address budget or some of the other items on the agenda?
We have public comments on, on budget, yes.
That's it? We don't have any, because it's the 7:30 time when it was now-
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I didn't understand. General public comments, yes, we do have some and we provided those, uh, comments to you. The, uh, we received three comments regarding ATP project, two comments opposing the project and one comment supporting. And we got, um, seven comments report regarding pickleball. All seven were in support of pickleball. And then, uh, and then the rest are about the budget, it appears.
Yeah, and then we get one, one opposing pickleball from a neighbor?
We actually have-
Yes.
No, this is-
Okay, Susan. Come on up.
I want to make a comment because we get public comments in addition to what is shown here. There were two public comments from neighbors, I believe.
Yeah, so, so what shows here are the, the comments submitted through the clerk's office as identified in the, in the agenda. We had this last week too. Some people send comments directly to the city council, which we, we do not, uh, they do not come in through the, through the city, uh, clerk's email that we track for the, for the meetings.
Okay, but do we have any that need to be, uh, read or summarized, uh, under, that are addressing, uh, subjects that are not on the agenda? I, I'm not hearing anything. So I guess we don't have any more public comment other than what you just summarized. Then we had two in favor, uh, or two opposed, one in favor of the ATP, is that right?
Yes.
And then we had a, a number of pickleball comments that were favorable and a couple that were not so favorable. What else do we have?
The, the other public comments are on the budget.
Okay, so we'll come back to the budget now. Uh, are, do you have, does staff have questions with James or should we open the public hearing? Okay, let's, the public hearing is now open. Um, what do we have, James?
Oh, so we, uh, we did receive some audio recordings that have requested to be played. And I believe, um, I have heard, I, uh, the request from a majority of councils to play them. So, uh, council members to play them. So we can play those, um, if, uh, if desired. So we can, we can play those now. I believe there's-
If so, um, then go ahead.
Are we keeping, oh, okay.
Are you playing? Are you playing them?
James, you're still sharing your screen before you open your email.
Yeah, let me. Good catch. Okay, so we're trying to play them, but.
When I learned that our city of Ojai spends 1/3 of its general fund on police services, I felt strongly that this large expenditure deserves additional oversight. It cannot be prudent to allocate $3.5 million this fiscal year to an organization that has refused to update our contract with them. And when I learned that our city has almost no real influence in the enforcement policies of sheriffs, I felt that this contractual relationship has become bereft of the basic trust and accountability between service providers and clients. This breakdown of trust has been accelerated recently by VCSO employees and the county district attorney investigator, breaking the law and defacing the First Amendment protected sign in our neighboring city of Thousand Oaks. The sign simply read BLM and was slashed and defaced by public servants. What is there to argue with in saying that Black Lives Matter? It could be that accountability is threatening to systems of law enforcement and judicial carceral bodies such as VCSO and the Office of the District Attorney. And that by saying Black Lives Matter, we are also saying that brown lives matter and poor lives matter and undocumented lives matter and mentally ill lives matter and unhoused lives matter. These are the very lives the VCSO and district attorney undoing harm. Why are we paying as a city millions of dollars year after year to VCSO to harass unhoused people in our community instead of simply increasing the access to harm reduction and housing assistance programs? Social services, social services are more impactful and cost efficient than law enforcement. There is currently no county services office within the Ojai Valley. Instead, people must go to an independent and underfunded local organization, help of Ojai's Community Assistance Program on Fox Street, to apply for county services. This lengthens the process when people need help now. Our renegotiations should be carried out in collaboration with neighboring contracting cities to right the wrongs that have been allowed to grow for decades in the VCSO and police unions. A practical model would be to reduce the amount we in the other cities pay the VCSO every year until our general funds more adequately reflect our values and known best practices serving community well-being. We should start by reducing it by half. The bottom line is there must be a reassessment of the contract. If they are unwilling to negotiate our contract, we must consider alternative methods of policing. Thank you for your time.
That was Emma Bailey.
Okay, do we have more?
Yeah, there's three more.
Okay.
Aaron Snyder is, is next.
Hi, my name is Aaron Snyder. I'm a constituent of the town of Ojai, California, and I call upon you as a leader and representative of my town to step up to support Black Lives in this time of crisis. Specifically, I'm calling on you to find a way to renegotiate the contract with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office in order to insist upon changes with respect to use of force practices. The city of Ojai spends 1/3 of its general fund on police services and such a large sum deserves additional oversight. It's not prudent to allocate $3.5 million to an organization that has refused to update our contract with them. There must regularly be a two-way reassessment of the contract. If they're unwilling to renegotiate our contract, we must consider alternative methods of policing. Making matters worse, in recent years and even in recent weeks, there's been a marked breakdown in trust between the VCSO and the communities it has sworn to protect. This fact is particularly visible in the killing of Megan Hockaday and in the recent vandalism of a Black Lives Matter sign in Thousand Oaks by county employees. I want to see the police budget cut in half and that money applied to social services that can better serve the needs of the community. I want Ojai to insist upon significant and far-reaching restrictions on use of force by police officers without taking no for an answer. Moreover, I want to see a market reduction in the racial profiling that happens in our town. Data must be collected in a systematic searchable manner. I'm calling for documentation of acts of discrimination like the ones we've detailed. I demand investigation and consequences for all those who are reported. And I insist on transparency, regular reports from the town government on the state of racist policing in the town. I propose adapting a Type 1 review board as delineated in the U.S. Department of Justice's Citizens Review of Police Approaches and Implementation, where citizens investigate allegations of police misconduct and recommend findings to the chief or sheriff. It is essential that this review board have independent subpoena power. Thank you for your time.
Ellen? Owen Coyle is, is next. And then there's one more.
I am a resident of the city of Ojai, California, and I call upon you as a leader and representative of my city to step up to support Black Lives in this time of crisis. Specifically, I am calling on you to find a way to renegotiate the contract with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office in order to insist upon changes with respect to use of force practices across the Ventura County Sheriff's Office's jurisdiction. The city of Ojai spends 1/3 of its general fund on Ventura County Sheriff's Office services and such a large sum deserves additional oversight. It is not prudent to allocate $3.5 million to an organization that has refused to update our contract with them. If they are unwilling to renegotiate our contract, we must consider alternative methods of policing. Making matters worse, in recent years and even in recent weeks, there has been a marked breakdown in trust between the Ventura County Sheriff's Office and the communities it has sworn to protect. This fact is particularly visible in the killing of Megan Hockaday and in the recent vandalism of a Black Lives Matter sign in Thousand Oaks by county employees. I want to see the police budget for the city of Ojai cut in half and that money applied to social services that can better serve the needs of the community. The majority of crimes in our community are misdemeanors or drug enforcement and the violent crime rate is lower than ever. I want the city of Ojai to work with other cities that contract with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office to push for significant and far-reaching restrictions on the use of force by sheriff's officers across Ventura County. Data on racial profiling must be collected in a systematic searchable manner. I'm calling for documentation of acts of discrimination like the ones we've detailed. I demand investigation and consequences for all those who are reported. And I insist on transparency, regular reports from the city government on the state of racist policing in the city. I propose adapting a Type 1 review board as delineated in the U.S. Department of Justice's Citizens Review of Police Approaches and Implementation, where citizens investigate allegations of police misconduct and, and recommend findings to the chief or sheriff. It is essential that this review board have independent subpoena power. Thank you for your time.
There's one more. I don't have the name for this person.
Ojai City Council, I am a constituent of the town of Ojai, California, and I call upon you as a leader and representative of my town to step up to support Black Lives in this time of crisis. Specifically, I am calling on you to find a way to renegotiate the contract with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office in order to assist, insist upon changes with respect to use of force practices. The city of Ojai spends 1/3 of its general fund on police services and such a large sum deserves additional oversight. It is not prudent to allocate $3.5 million to an organization that has refused to update our contract with them. There must regularly be a two-way reassessment of the contract. If they are unwilling to negotiate our contract, we must consider alternative methods of policing. Making matters worse, in recent years and even in recent weeks, there has been a marked breakdown in trust between the VCSO and the communities it has sworn to protect. This fact is particularly visible in the killing of Megan Hockaday and in the recent vandalism of a Black Lives Matter sign in Thousand Oaks by county employees. I want to see the police budget cut in half and that money applied to social services that can better serve the needs of the community. I want Ojai to insist upon significant and far-reaching restrictions on use of force by police officers without taking no for an answer. Moreover, I want to see a marked reduction in the racial profiling named above. Data must be collected in a systematic searchable manner. I'm calling for documentation of acts of discrimination like the ones we have detailed. I demand investigation and consequences for all those who are reported. And I insist on transparency, regular reports from the town government on the state of racist policing in town. I propose adapting a Type 1 review board as delineated in the U.S. Department of Justice's Citizens Review of Police Approaches and Implementation, where citizens investigate allegations of police misconduct and recommend findings to the chief or sheriff. It is essential that this review board have independent subpoena power. Thank you for your time. My name is Sarah Del Vecchio.
Those are the four that we've received.
Mayor?
Yes.
I had a request from Andra Bellnapp that I read her statement. It's under three minutes.
Okay.
Go ahead. Okay, and if I notice some, some repetition, I'll try to not read that part, okay? First, we know that our VCSO contract represents approximately 1/3 of Ojai's general fund. We know that Ojai's current police contract has not been meaningfully revised since the early 80s, even though the text of the contract calls for revisions each five years at most. We know that the Ventura County Grant Jury called on the VCSO to revise their contracts with contract cities in 2012, eight years ago. What are we waiting for? Second, I am not at all convinced that the service VCSO provides our community annually is worth $3.5 million. It would frankly be quite difficult to make an informed judgment about the efficiency of VCSO services given the lack of transparency in the contracting process. Here is what I do know about VCSO services during the period 2016 to 2018, the most recent dates for which these figures are available. Thanks to FOIA requests, I'm not sure what that acronym stands for.
Freedom of Information Act.
Oh, of course, thank you, um, from Campaign Zero. 64% of VSO arrests during this period represent misdemeanors, 32% represent drug offenses and 6% represent violent crime. During that period, 73 inmates were transferred to ICE custody and 11 died in jail. I unfortunately don't have statistics regarding the racial makeup of VCSO arrests during this period, but we do have that data for the Ventura Police Department. During the aforementioned period, 26% of Ventura's population was Latino. Yet data shows that Latinos represent more than 40% of the people arrested by Ventura Police Department during that period. My questions, what do these numbers look like for our community? Is this what we want to spend 1/3 of our tax dollars on? Third, this council should be aware that two Ventura County employees were arrested over the weekend, I didn't know they were arrested, over the weekend for defacing a Black Lives Matter sign in Thousand Oaks. One man is an employee of VCSO, the other worked for the Ventura County District Attorney's Office. CBS has reported that the VCSO employee has been placed on administrative leave, which I can only assume means he is still receiving a public, sorry, publicly funded paycheck. If we can't trust VCSO employees not to deface a sign that simply states Black Lives Matter, I don't trust the organization to safely police our communities. Thank you for your attention to these issues, Andra Bellnapp.
Thank you, Susan.
Did Andra move back to town?
Yes. Andra, for those who don't know, she's the daughter of former city manager Andy Bellnapp.
Okay, James, where are we here? Do we have any more?
So, uh, we don't have any more themes, but I, uh, I think with it being a public hearing and a city attorney can confirm or, or correct me, I, I believe we need to pause for a minute to send, uh, all of the full public comments to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vega. That's correct. Under the pandemic orders by the governor, particularly Governor's Executive Order Number N6320, under which we're operating, to have a public hearing by Zoom or other electronic media, we need to receive all public comments by email up to now, uh, sent to cityclerk@ojacy.org and then take a pause for a couple of minutes for the council to receive and consider those items.
Okay, uh, Matt, uh, did I open the public hearing or do we just go to comments?
I think we did open the public hearing before we took the, um, the audio comments.
Okay, well, the fact that I may be neglecting to make it clear, I'll say, you know, the hearing is open and we're, we'll continue taking comments. James, do you have anybody else that's sending anything in?
Uh, so, um, if we could pause to, to send all those emails over to you, I think we have 12 total. I'm not sure.
Yeah, we need, we need to send them all, send every email to council.
Yeah.
So I think you may have just been sent summaries so far.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Randy?
I just have a question. Is this a new format?
Yeah, and so, you know, we, this last week before. Yeah, we had it on, it was a format we had in place for last week's public, or last two weeks' public hearings, but there were no comments during those public hearings.
Exactly.
On the, um, on the, uh, the annual street lighting district assessment. So now we actually have public comments, hence the need for, in putting this method into practice. Well, like a five-minute break for this to come?
That, that's what I would request, yeah.
I also have a, a comment that was briefly submitted this afternoon from Michelle Lee here. It just didn't, it didn't connect with the police matters, so I didn't read it. It's-
So, if I could clarify-
Pardon me, Mr. Snyder. I didn't quite hear, Bill, you said something about a five-minute break?
I, I think that the city manager is asking for a five-minute break to get these public comments to us.
Okay, so why don't we do that right now and then we'll come back? Is that, is that acceptable? Okay, so we're taking a five-minute recess while they, uh, transfer the, uh, emails to us, right?
Yep, so you should get an email from our, from our deputy city clerk and, and then, uh, you'll have a couple of minutes to review those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, well, has everybody had a chance to read the-- Are we on?
We're live.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to look at the emails that the clerk forwarded to us? If I'm correct, most of them are relating to police services and are recommending that the city take a new-- a fresh look at how we provide police services and renegotiate our contract with the sheriff's office. That's a very complex issue and not really something we're going to do this evening. Right now, we're adopting a budget which does include money to enter into a contract with the sheriff or to order services. And my question of the staff, James, if you're out there-- yes, you are. You're right at my screen-- do we have a date yet for a meeting with the sheriff's administration?
The chief and I were just discussing. We are working on scheduling that meeting. I think the one point I want to make is adopting the budget doesn't lock us into anything. We're not-- we didn't include any service-level request or anything with the budget, but we are working on coordinating the meeting with the sheriff's department to review the contract.
And so the appropriation we'd be authorizing is money to be spent for police services of some sort in an amount that's approximate of what we expect to spend this coming year based upon what we would have spent during the current year.
Yes.
Bill?
I wanted to clarify the comment just for the public that the city manager just made. One of the provisions of the contract is we request services. And at that time, they're supposed to tell us the pricing of those services. And so what he's saying is that approving the budget tonight is not approving a services request. And therefore, we're not locking into anything for the next fiscal year. I just want to make that clear. And so I think right now, we're just-- we're talking about a budget approval that hopefully will be subject to adjustment after discussion with the sheriff's department. And also to get clear that there's two principles I think are very important. One is the county-- I think we really need to talk to the county about insisting that every contract with each of their clients be the same in the various cities. That doesn't-- that's not-- I don't think that maximizes the benefits to each community, and this will come up again with the animal services issue. And second of all, the magnitude of the amount of money that we are spending, more than anyone else in terms of our taxing capacity, however you want to look at it. So I think we are in a good position to be able to make the case. And I know I really want to-- Mayor, I want to appreciate your insights into how this has all developed and how to approach, you know, opening the discussion. So I just-- I really want to appreciate that. I think we have some real degrees of freedom here in terms of looking at the kinds of services that make sense for our community and also how we can really make the case that relative to taxing capacity, we are contributing more than any other jurisdiction in the county.
Thank you, Bill. James, I just got a note that said we received-- in fact, I just saw a letter from a Sofia RC. Everybody get that?
Yes, I received it.
It's also underlining basically what was said in the recordings and the other letters, but I wanted to make sure that we heard Sofia's concerns.
Because it was similar to the other ones.
Right.
Could I make another inquiry, Mayor?
Mayor, I do see a couple of points that are different as I go down.
Okay, well, let's hear-- Susan, let's hear from Bill, and then we'll come back to you, and you can make--
Very quick question. James, I believe we would be able to approve the budget tonight with just the total amount for community support and bring back that more for more detailed debate on another agenda item?
Yes.
That's to be divided?
Yes, we could do that. The only note I will make is that I think each of those-- each of the two organizations that have requested funding would typically bill in July, so that would be the only holdup.
But that would be an option. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Susan--
I would like to read the comments in Sophie's-- Sophie RC's letter to us that were different. So, I don't know if you have it in front of you. "At a protest in Ojai, children spoke out about blatant racism they've experienced in our schools and their fear of the local police. They courageously discussed the everyday alienation they feel as non-white residents of our town. I learned about the murders of Megan Hockaday, Alfonso Liman, Michael Mahoney, Robert Ramirez, and Juan Zavala, all lives taken by police in our county. I am writing to ask that you end your contract with the Ventura Police Department and use that money to create solutions that work for the people of our city, or at least invest less money in it and reinvest in public safety and educations. Our schools need support not to be patrolled by police. Children are scared. I am enraged by Ojai's enormous budget on police services." I'm going to not read that whole part. But then she makes an important point. "Research has shown that community efforts to address homelessness, food insecurity, and mental health keep people far safer than putting more officers on the street. We do not need more police. We need far fewer police, and we need immediate help for the Ojai community members bearing the brunt of the ongoing recession. I call on you to slash police spending, reinvest that money in developing our communities like public school. We can't cut programs that help our communities in order to protect our soaring police budget. Instead, we should set an example for cities across America by eliminating the Ventura County Police Department's bloat and investing in our most vulnerable in affordable housing, education, jobs, and more." I think the point that all the letters have made is that we should examine investing more in social services and seeing if we can then lessen the police budget by preventative investment in social services. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ryan?
You know, this topic, I have a lot to say. I've talked with a lot of people in our community. I've studied a lot for my time at USC to-- I have a lot of different opinions, but I'm going to ask this now. If there's a second, if there's not, I understand. But I would like to bring this topic back up for a longer discussion at appropriate time at another meeting when it's on the agenda. Not necessarily-- I don't know what our agenda decision would be, but I know that this is a discussion that's worth more than just a couple of quick synopses of a couple of comments. And I don't think-- I have a lot of opinions I'd really like to share. I just don't think right now is the right time. So if there's a second, I'd like to dedicate a little bit of time at a future meeting as soon as possible to be able to discuss this a little more in depth.
I'd like to second that. I'd like to also have a discussion that involves our new chief. And because I feel like we really-- I feel our chief of police really does attempt to do very good outreach. I want to add that. So that could be part of the discussion. I second Ryan's question.
Well, I think that that's a good idea. We do need to do this, and we also need to have some public education as to how all these different services come together, who provides them. Because once again, most people seem to think that we are the center of the universe here in Ojai, which I like to think we are too. But there are limits as to how much we can influence the others. But I think it's always worthwhile to, you know, one, be transparent in what we're doing, and two, to make sure that the citizens of the town understand what we're doing and why. So we'll put that on-- I'm not sure when the-- which agenda they--
July 14th.
Yeah. Depends on what else we have going there and how much progress we've made in being able to talk to the sheriff's office. But yes, okay, any-- well, I don't need an approval or objection. The answer, Ryan, is it's a good suggestion. We're going to do it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, before you close the public hearing, when is the appropriate time to read Michelle's comment? Michelle Lehe, do you want to see that as we go through the budget, or are we--
Michelle's comment on which part of it?
On the overall budget. She--
Yeah, well, we received it. Did you want to read it?
Yeah, she wants it to be read.
Okay, well, now's a good time. Go ahead.
Okay. "Good evening. I am concerned that the proposed budget falls short of adequately responding to the climate crisis. I should add that this is from Michelle-- for the public-- this is from Michelle Ellison, who is a member of our Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee." So she says, "While there is great financial uncertainty due to COVID, we are still making choices now about how we intend to spend whatever money we do have. It appears that cutting our emissions isn't receiving as much of a focus as it should. Other wants," in quote, "are taking precedent over needs. We urgently need to stop burning fossil fuels. Our very survival depends on it." And she makes the point that in terms of measures C funding, climate mitigation is allocated just 76,000 out of 1,490. 490, wait, I read that wrong, 1,490. Am I reading that right, James?
It should be about 1,490, yeah.
Yeah, 1,490, thank you. That's a measly 5%. Are the other expenditures really more important than ensuring we have a habitable planet? I urge you to significantly increase the percentage allocated for climate mitigation. The other two, and this is another point. The other two environmental-related budget items, ATP and Stewart Canyon, are both funded by grants and don't deal directly with reducing the city's own emissions. Why are we not allocating any funds to reduce the carbon footprint for city operations specifically by converting gas furnaces to electric heat pumps in city buildings? There are some optional discretionary would-be-nice items currently in budget that could be postponed to give priority to climate action. And she said that she, she said this in an earlier email. If I had to choose just one project to reduce the city's emissions this year, it would be get rid of all gas heating and city facilities and convert them to electric heat pumps. Since the city will be considering potential reach codes for building electrification soon, this would also set an important example for the community. The city would walk the talk. We just replaced the old gas furnace in our home with an electric mini split heat pump system and it's much more efficient and runs on clean energy. End of per pump. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments before we close the public hearing? Okay, hearing none, going once, going twice. Okay, public hearing is now closed. And it is brought back to council for deliberation and action.
In order to move forward, I'm going to move approval of the budget as proposed by staff.
Is there a second?
Mayor?
Is there a second? Are you seconding?
I'll second it for discussion.
Well, you seconded it. Okay, now, yeah, what, Randy?
Well, we're still shy $52,000 in the funding allocations for the museum, the chamber, and the arts. Am I correct, James? We've allocated 114 and it adds up to 166.
The 35,000 for the arts is separately included. It's not in that 114,000.
Okay, because you had bunched it in the same, with the same group when I was looking at it.
Yeah, yeah.
And my motion is specifically intended not to take up the division detail tonight, but just to approve it, the overall amount.
Okay, other questions, the staff? Okay, roll call. The court.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Proton Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes, keeping in mind the comments from the public.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Is that it? Everybody accounted for? Motion carries?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is. The emergency response and update. James?
Thank you. This, I have one last presentation. It'll be my last presentation here today.
You referring to a PowerPoint presentation?
PowerPoint presentation, I'm sorry.
We haven't let you go yet.
And then I'm out of here. So we wanted to just have a brief overview. The Board of Supervisors met this morning and also had a brief overview and we wanted to make sure to pass on some of that information and to the council and to the public as well. We wanted to start by kind of showing the statistics of coronavirus back on May 26 versus today. And so we just want to show that quickly, just so people see what the trends are. Back on May 26, we had 912 cases in Ventura County with 29 new cases reported that day. Six cases in Ojai, 23 hospitalized patients, 13 within the ICU, and 30 deaths at that time. Testing had just started to pick up, so we're at 22,685 tested. And essentially, we had about 4.1% of total cases are, have tested, were testing positive. And so now, fast forward a month. This is the most recent statistics released by the county this morning. There are 2,161 total cases, 131 new cases reported yesterday, 14 cases in Ojai. Ojai still is doing well. And I think that's because of all the efforts put in by residents and council and others to ensure social distancing. We have 51 currently hospitalized and I will get back to that in a minute. That's an important number. 14 in the ICU, which is not much of an increase from a month ago. But 43 deaths at this time. And we've had 50,780 tested with a 4.25% positive rate. The key number right now, and the county spoke about this at length this morning, is the number hospitalized. And that has increased, almost doubled in a month. And essentially, people may have heard that a month or about 10 days ago, the County of Ventura had been put on the state watch list, which means that the state was going to be in close communication with the county about how the reopening will go and potentially could slow down the reopening for the county. We got off the watch list, but we were on the watch list because the hospitalization numbers had spiked. And so today, the concerning thing that, for us to watch and keep in mind is the number has increased again. We have not, we don't believe that will be put back on the watch list at this point, but it's a number that we have to closely watch. And again, the reason is, if that number spikes, it would likely lead to, you know, a slowdown in reopening or potentially, you know, a pause or potentially even closing certain sectors. So, so the numbers, you know, the big picture is that the new cases haven't stopped. But what we're hoping is happening is flattening the curve and we're watching for any spikes.
That number is pretty high, isn't it, for one day?
Yes, so that was, to my knowledge, that was the largest one-day increase.
Quick question?
Yep.
I heard on one of those briefing calls that there are some transfers from other counties into Ventura County because of our, our capacity is very good. Are those hospitalization numbers, are they net of the transfers from other counties or include those?
I'm not sure. They had said at one point that our numbers were Ventura County residents, but I'm not sure specifically if that includes the hospitalization numbers.
Okay, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, we can find out.
And what was, the number of deaths of May, what was that number again?
30.
30, so, okay, so about a 50% increase, almost.
Mayor, James, what was the, on the number of people tested? It was a month ago, what was the number? 22,000 to 50,000. So we've almost doubled the testing. By the way, I did test, I did take the test. And it gets you on your tippy toes. I'm telling you, they run that straw pretty deep.
My, I watched my wife go through it. It was difficult to watch.
Yeah. However, I'm just looking at the percentage still. It's interesting the fact that it went from 4.1 to 4.2 and we've doubled the testing. So that number seems to be of the tested positive, has kind of reached plateau itself.
I have a question, nice question, Mayor. Usually, Dr. Levin tells us whether or not the deaths were comorbidity. Do you know, James, all of them? And sometimes he'll tell us the ages, if they're over 90, that sort of thing.
I, I, the, I believe he did say that these, that at this point, they've all still had comorbidities. But I was trying to find my notes to confirm that. I think he did say that this morning, but we'll confirm that. So Suzie, what point are you trying to make when you ask that question? The second time you've brought it up and I'm not sure what you mean.
It means that they had underlying health conditions such as heart disease, cancer, that they already, that these are vulnerable people. These are not deaths of, that are just coming out of the, out of the blue. They're not healthy people that had bad luck. I mean, the main point is that they had underlying health issues. It's not to say that this is not a sad turn of events, that their deaths that may have been hastened by the coronavirus. But I think it's important for the public to realize that, you know, the fact that these people had underlying health conditions or they were over 90 years old, things like that. Some of them were, with the younger ones, at least one was a drug overdose, that sort of thing.
But your point is what? That clearly, everybody had said that the age and comorbidity makes you at a greater risk.
Yes.
Right, but the people who have the disease, carry the disease, and communicate the disease can be any age. And when they fail to understand that social or physical distancing is important and wearing a mask is important, there, if I know, I don't know what Randy's getting at, but the reaction I have to that kind of a comment is, is well, don't worry about it if you're not old and, you know, and led a desolate life or had bad luck with your health.
My point is, 43 people have died in our community and I don't really care what condition they had or have. It's the fact that we have a loss of life. We have a loss of either grandparents or parents or brothers or sisters. And the fact that we want to mince it or mix it up with, well, they had a pre-existing condition, to me is so irrelevant. It's the fact that 43 people have died in our community and that's a huge loss. That's where I'm coming from.
Well.
It is, it is relevant as to risk. It's not relevant if you're one of the people at risk and somebody else, you know, carrying the disease and not being careful.
Or someone in your family has died or someone that you've known has died.
I think it's hard for the public to understand the circumstances of these deaths. That's the only point I'm trying to make. There is no underlying motivation that we should be careless if we're young and healthy. That's not my point. I'm, you know, anyway, and then we have to keep in mind that people do die. It's a fact of life. You know, that's just part of the whole picture. Okay, you're done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to add quickly. I had a really difficult time finding this information online, so I just want to share it publicly. It's actually really difficult to find. But the current no-fee drive-through testing sites available in Ventura County, the closest one is Ventura College, which is 10 to 7:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday. And Moore Park College in Moore Park, the Ford dealership in Santa Paula, and Oxnard College in Oxnard. I'm not going to go through all the times. Most of them are 10, they're all 10 to 7. They have a couple of different dates. I actually had a really hard time finding that on stuff. I, you know, we, I get emails from the county directly. I want to make sure people are aware of that. It's also been highly put out there publicly that on July 2, there will be antibody testing in the Ojai Valley. It's not actually in Ojai, it's going to be technically in Miners Oaks at the Redemption Church at 190 East El Roblar. I know because of the distance and the timing, a lot of people I've talked to in the community have not necessarily gotten down there for that or they, you know, or haven't gotten tested. And people have been asking me, hey, is it free? Do you need insurance? These are drive-through, no appointment, no insurance necessary. You should look to see what the symptomatology is supposed to be before you go necessarily take a test. But it is available and it's important that people are aware of it. And if they need any help finding it, they can always contact me or the city will help you because it's actually really buried in the county site. Aside from that, I just want to say, I have actually been self-quarantining for the last two weeks and I've been concerned, I, you know, on Father's Day, I couldn't go see my dad because I was around some people. I haven't had any symptoms. I don't believe I'm infected, but I obviously don't know exactly for sure, although I have been tested once and was negative. But I just want to say that, you know, some of these things are really tough. The, you know, the social responsibility we have is a really important factor, all this. And I just want to remind everyone that it's not always fun, it's necessary. But I couldn't see my dad on Father's Day just because I was concerned if I was potentially carrying something in his current medical condition. And just to remind everybody that, you know, these numbers are going up. We got to be really cognizant of everyone. And lastly, I just wanted to just kind of give a shout out to all of our city and especially to James, that we were early on the masks. And while there is a debate out there about the veracity of masking, I can say this, we have the lowest per capita 100,000 infection rate in the county. We're the first ones to go to masks. So, you know, we should all make that sacrifice and continue to do it. It apparently, at least in our community, has worked. So I just want to remind everyone of that.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks.
James, where are we?
So we had, similarly, we had noticed that it was hard to find information on testing. So we had, I pulled this slide up real quick. We had put some of the websites out where you can go to get more information on just testing in general, the antibody testing coming up in the Ojai Valley. And then also, we just heard that UCLA and Cal Lutheran are doing a study and they're offering antibody testing at Oxnard Fire Department for county residents. And it'll be a, you know, essentially a study to look and try to figure out how to trace this back. So that, there are three websites here and we'll post the information on our website as well. It is difficult to find. But, just quickly, just to kind of, we won't go back through everything, but just to remind people, because over the last two weeks since our last council meeting, several modifications have come out. Going back to May 7, when businesses started to reopen, including retail businesses with curbside delivery. May 12, office-based businesses, pet groomers, outdoor museums and other public spaces were able to reopen and the state released guidelines for restaurant dining. May 20, which I believe is right before our last council meeting, hair salons and barber shops were permitted to reopen. In case anybody hasn't heard, on May 21, the City of Ojai issued an executive order allowing outdoor expanded dining space. And that, we have now nine businesses who have signed up for. And if businesses are interested in doing so, they can contact the city to move that forward. On June 1, which was after our most recent council meeting, the state issued guidance and the county adopted it for long-term care visitation to begin again and homeowners association pools to reopen. On June 11, the county similarly adopted state guidelines for places of worship to reopen, campgrounds, RV parks, outdoor recreation, racetracks, day camps, family entertainment centers, fitness facilities, lodging, restaurants, bars, wineries, although those others in asterisks, it's if they serve food. School and school-based programs, museums and others. So the point of this slide is, a lot has reopened in the last couple of weeks. And so we're trying to kind of summarize for anybody who has questions about, you know, particular areas. The county has created a website called BC Reopens and you can go to that website and click which area you're interested in and it will give you the regulations and guidelines. On June 15, since our last meeting, we issued an executive order that allows fitness classes to be held at our parks to promote social distancing. It created a low-cost fee that, just for scheduling and coordinating. I believe it's a $20 fee. And we've now had two fitness instructors sign up for that. No contact sports are allowed, but we're hoping that gives people a chance to exercise safely outside instead of in cramped rooms where it's difficult to distance. And then most recently, and probably most importantly was June 18, the state of California's face covering order went into effect in many public places, I should say many. So now, we continue to get questions about, you know, why the face covering is required in, within the city limits but not outside the city limits. As of June 18, it's statewide. So that hopefully will not be an issue and it should help everybody. So that hopefully will not be an issue and it should help everybody realize that it's required everywhere in California. And the next step coming up on June twenty-sixth is that the county will allow, is expected to allow nail salons, massage parlors and other personal care shops to open.
You know, I'm going to ask about our playgrounds.
Yeah, so we did ask about playgrounds. Those haven't been opened yet, but we're meeting Thursday again, so I will ask the county again about it. With the schools, schools and school-based programs, and we were thinking that it's close. And I should have noted somewhere in here, or might have noted it in a separate slide, we did talk to the county about skate parks. And as a result of kind of our discussion, they've allowed the skate parks to reopen throughout the county. So that was, that was one positive recently.
I keep asking.
Yeah, we, we will. So quickly, the California face covering requirement, I won't go into all this level of detail, but we get a lot of questions about what's actually required. It, it does require face coverings inside of or in line to enter any indoor public space when visiting hospitals, pharmacies or similar businesses. When riding on public transportation or in a taxi, private car service or ride-sharing vehicle like an Uber. When working, when working, when you are interacting with members of the public. So if you're working at home without anybody in the public there, you do not have to wear a face covering. That, that caused some confusion. Working in a space visited by the public. And one key thing here is they said, the state of California has said regardless of whether anyone else is present. We had said, if you're in a store and there's no customers and nobody else working there, it wouldn't be required, but the state has gone further than that. Working in any, any space where food is prepared, we had had questions about that and the, the state has now gone, has now made that part of their order. And there was one other key one that we've gotten questions about. The state, state's order says that face coverings are required well outdoors in public spaces when it's not feasible to maintain a physical distance of six feet from others outside your household. So essentially, if you're getting near others that aren't, that you don't live with, you should put a face covering on is, is the state's order. There are some exemptions for children under two, people with medical conditions. And people eating at a restaurant, that's the other one that comes up a lot. The other one, actually I should mention is there's an exemption for anyone engaged in outdoor work or recreation such as swimming, walking, hiking, biking, but it's when they're alone or with someone in their household or when they can stay at least six feet from others. So the state's order has kind of implemented what we've been trying to do statewide as part of the reopening. And as a reminder, the state hasn't used the, the lingo quite as much lately, but state, stage three was supposed to be when personal and hospitality services began, which is projected June twenty-sixth. So we're starting to slide into stage three at this point. And a movie theater is also, I believe, are going to open on June twenty-sixth, if I recall correctly. I didn't mention. So we talked about testing. We also wanted to talk about some recent city actions. Hopefully people are seeing the support your Ojai businesses banner that the task force had worked on. The task force that includes, I'll, I'll give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce, Jamie Fleming. He has spearheaded that project and we have a couple other members, including Councilmember Wyrick and Haney and some local businesses as well. The city has recently installed touchless hand sanitizer stations. We, we've continued to have the hand wash stations and increased trash pickup and other sanitization efforts such as bathroom cleanup more frequently to reduce the possible risk of spread. As I mentioned earlier, we are now up to nine outdoor dining permits for local restaurants to encourage supporting local business safely with better social distancing. As I mentioned earlier, we've reopened the skate parks, the tennis courts and then the pickleball courts with limited hours at this time. We will talk to the county on Thursday about the latest status of playgrounds. Also, we're excited to announce that we are starting to gradually open our recreation programs with an emphasis on very small groups, non-contact sports. And when possible, trying to do outdoor activities as much as possible. Even, we have a, I believe it's a Lego, Lego camp starting Monday and they are going to be playing with Legos outside this year. So we're trying to do that responsibly and safely and gradually to make sure everybody's comfortable. We had, we had only a few participants in our day camp program. So we're going to keep an eye on that. If there's not interest, you know, we may not be able to support it. So anybody who's watching who has interest in that, please visit the city's recreation page for more information. We continue to address issues at the trail, the farmer's market and other locations where crowds can be issued. And then, I wanted to say this earlier, but I didn't want to get ahead of it is we appreciate everybody bearing with us during these virtual meetings, which I know give people headaches. But the good news is the county, county's board of supervisors have opened their meetings. And with that, they have said that cities can begin to reopen our meetings to the public. The county did have some issues this morning. If anybody watched, they had some members of the public who, they had marked off every other chair. And they had some members of the public who refused to not use the chairs that were marked off. And so they had to adjourn and escort some people out. So it hasn't been completely flawless yet, but I'm confident here in Ojai that, you know, I think, I think our residents have, have responded, you know, great to this under trying circumstances. So we were considering and wanted to get feedback on reopening that July fourteenth meeting. Is most likely some sort of hybrid where some members could attend virtually and some may want to attend physically. And we would open up our patio and have some seats outside with some distancing for people who want to come and participate. So with that, that was the latest update. And like I said, there's a couple items that we could discuss further. One last thing quickly is the Montgomery, we had talked last meeting about potentially closing Montgomery Street. We're, we're meeting with businesses and we were reviewing that as an option at this time. And we were hoping to have more to report, but we, the, the biggest challenge right now is that most of the businesses are shorthanded and so they are still not in a position where they're excited about opening and expanding out where they can't, they don't have the staff to support it. So at this time, we're still talking about it at the task force meetings and trying to, to gauge how many people will participate. We think two businesses will participate at this point. So we, we will keep working on that and see if we can get the participation level to increase on that. And that's the, the latest update on kind of the coronavirus response.
Thank you, James. Any questions, James, on this topic before we move along?
Great presentation.
I do, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, for what it's worth, let everybody know this morning, there was an article about Ventura County in the LA Times that had misapplied the numbers of positive cases kind of inversely when they cut and pasted into their database. I saw this on Facebook this morning. I reached out to the LA Times. We got it corrected. I copied James on it. In case anybody hears about it, they had Ojai list, they had Oakview listed as Oxnard with six hundred plus cases. They had Ojai next. Somehow they got the whole thing completely botched. I, I saw it. I, we got it taken care of, but just in case anybody hears about it, that was what was going on. So everybody knows. And the, the, in, in defense of the LA Times, they were very quick and very apologetic about it. And they tucked their tail between their legs and apologized. So that was taken care of. And I, I appreciate what the task force is doing. I did see in the paper, there's, you know, Topa Topa had said in the paper that they were interested in Ojai having, you know, it doesn't sound like that's working. I, I feel like I've heard more positive response on, on Montgomery, but if that's, you know, what you guys are getting now. I appreciate that. I don't think we all hear the same voice from everybody we talk to when we go out there. So I think that's part of it. But I, I do hope, especially after seeing what Ventura is doing, you know, as long as it's the merchants saying or the, you know, restaurants or mail saying no and it's available out there, then that's as far as we can go. But I'm, I'm a little surprised, but you know, I understand where our, where our community is right now. It's hard to, if you don't have enough people, it doesn't really help. But I do hope that, I've talked to so many people in the community who thought the Montgomery Street was a wonderful idea. In fact, I'd even suggest if we end up doing it, there may be a long-term application for that upper area. I know Mr. Wyrick and I, we had, we were discussing that upper area and trying to fix that. This wasn't that long ago. I just want to put it out there in the, in the world that there may be an opportunity at some point to look at maybe closing Montgomery out permanently. That might be a, a long-term, a better solution for that little area there than even spending all the money to repair it. I do hope that somebody opens up, but obviously I appreciate the task force getting out there, getting in the streets and getting information from everybody. And I, it sure feels busy in town. It has the appearance of being your run-of-the-mill weekend summer day out there. You know, this weekend especially. So I'm, I, and I, and I know we're really at half-capacity on everything. So it's, it's an interesting feel for where we are, but I'm hoping that we can, as we can get capacity up appropriately and safely. I think there's an opportunity to make back some of the money we've lost over these months. But I really appreciate both you guys working on it and the effort Jamie's putting into. And over the last week, I've heard from a lot of, a lot more merchants and operators in downtown saying, yeah, yeah, we've been, you know, we're in communication with everybody. Which I think is a really positive thing. So thank you, guys.
Thanks for the feedback, man.
Thank you.
Okay, James, are we ready for number five?
Yeah, I, the only kind of action item from that was to approve the executive order creating the low-fee park rental for, for fitness classes.
Okay.
I'll move approval recommendations, one, two and three in the staff report.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, moving and seconded. Any further discussion? I guess a roll call on that. We got money involved.
Oh, Suzie has a comment.
But James, did we, did you automatically approve the reopening of Farmer's Market using the Alisa Street entrance?
So we are working on that with them. We can either, I, I was comfortable working through that with them, but unless council, you know, has concerns, you can, you can direct me to follow up on that. We, we had asked some follow-up questions about exactly how they were going to coordinate. So if they addressed those, you know, we were, we were pretty comfortable opening up that, that exit.
I'm good leaving that to James.
Me too.
I just wanted to make sure you didn't need anything from us. I just wanted to make a, a comment, tagging on what Ryan was saying. The, the purpose of closing streets off the traffic is not just for residents, I mean, not just for restaurants, restaurants. But the residents like the idea of having a public space where they can walk and social distance and not worry about being hit by cars. And a lot of cities are just doing events like a car-free Sundays. Those are, cities are doing those kind of things and maybe down the road, we can discuss something like that. You know, where actually the whole town, you know, we have a day so the town can, what it feels like to just roam freely, you know? So that's, that's part of the car-free day movement. The car-free street.
That's, that's a proposal for another topic, but I understand you're, you're, you're just being free.
Coming to a city near you.
Okay, let's get a, let's get a vote on our motion that James can institute the low-fee park permit.
Councilmember Haney?
Oh.
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, number five, agreement on Ventura animal services, James.
Oh, we skipped one item.
Oh, did we? Oh, pardon me. Oh, yeah, we have a.
I heard a recall petition just land, I think.
We got two people here that are waiting in the wings. Sorry it took so long.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll quickly introduce Steve Colome and Phil White, who are on our climate emergency mobilization ad hoc committee, which I will call climate committee the rest of the, the meeting. As part of, when council reviewed the committee and the charter, the council had asked the committee to come back with, with, you know, interim reports. And the committee has placed several brief status reports on the city council consent calendar. But today is the first interim report. I think, and I, I think it's, you know, we're, we're six months, I believe, into the committee. I might have that, I might be off by a month or two. But so with that, the Steve Colome and Phil White wanted to provide this report and a brief presentation. So they are on the meeting and I'll hand it over to them.
Yeah, Dr. Colome, you're on.
Very good. Given the, the hour, this can be, can be scaled to the tolerance of the council at this point. So if you give me a sense for about how long you want to get into this, I, I will scale it that way.
Well, what are the parameters you're thinking of from, from quick to, to long?
Oh, from, from ten minutes to two hours. No.
Okay, okay. How about ten or fifteen then?
Okay, that's, that's what we'll, we'll aim for. So just as a, a matter of background in terms of what we're asking for at this point, we were started as a committee by you on the tenth of December. And this is our ten, six-month time cycle. Originally, the, the committee was commissioned only for the first six months. We were to have a couple of public meetings, one we were able to have at the end of January. And we were supposed to have one to present our preliminary report, which is what we had sent to you all about two weeks ago, I think. Everyone should have received that. We're quite proud of the, of the report and the, and the effort. And the only thing that we're going to be asking for tonight is that you receive and file that report and, and put it on the city website under the, the climate committee so that the public can look at the, the recommendations of the, of the committee. And so what I'm going to try and do, let's see if I'm able to share my screen and get a PowerPoint up. Let's see. Is that, is that clear to you? Because once I've done that, I can't see you.
I can see you.
It's not up yet, Steve.
Oh, it's not? Okay, so I.
James, does he have, James, does he have capability to share a screen or did you give him a guest privilege?
I think we're working on giving him the capability.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm looking at is my, my PowerPoint presentation. So you can let me know when that when and if it shows up. But in, in, in the meantime, I'll go ahead and, and proceed and then I can move, move ahead on the, on the slides. So again, we were given an initial six-month time period. Some point this spring, because it was clear from the COVID emergency that we weren't going to be able to meet all of the expectations. And so we were given an extension through the end of the, the year. We essentially have met the expectations in terms of what the, what the council was asking for us. You asked for input in four different areas. Energy to investigate options for energy efficiency, renewable energy and electrification. Vehicle and other internal combustion engine, investigate options to support low emission alternatives to internal combustion vehicles. Carbon sequestration, which is capturing carbon out of the atmosphere to investigate options for removal of carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. And specifically in city operations, you wanted recommendations from us on things that the city could do to incorporate a sense of urgency for addressing climate.
You should be able to share now.
And 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 I, well, let's see, I may have to go. I'm gonna have to, let's see, go ahead and then start this all over again. Sorry about that.
Here, I want to request that the time starts when the slideshow starts because this is of great interest to the public. We have Dr. Colome himself.
You don't need to make a special request. This is public.
There's a timer. I don't know. Well, I've, I've been, I've clicked on share, share my screen and what, are you seeing anything?
No, we're not.
But you're doing a wonderful.
Share screen, you should. Have the option to click on which screen you want to share.
There you go, Suzie. Are you, are you seeing?
I saw the city of Ojai Seal.
Don't tell me whether this is, this is on the screen or not.
No, we're not getting it, Steve. I don't know.
All right.
You're doing a wonderful job so far. I'm not sure if the graphics are going to help you, but you're, you're, you're doing well.
All right, well, they're, they're wonderful graphics. So I will, when I, actually, James has got a copy of the.
I could try to pull it up real quick.
Well, I'm so just joining, I will just say, the the report we received from you guys is really amazing, Steve. Well, very, as robust and well done as I think we get reports ever. So thank you very much, especially from non. Non-staff reports, no, no reason. James over there.
We've got the high tech timer going.
Oh, look at that, look at that. You've got to expect it from the staff, so.
Whatever, you worked hard, Steve. You take your time.
There we go.
Okay, so you've got it.
Yeah, so you, tell me when to change.
Let's go ahead to the second, to the third slide. So we'll, we'll move, move, move ahead. So I really want to emphasize this because I don't think I've ever worked with a group quite like this before. And again, for the, you got, you know, but for the public's interest. All, each one of you selected one individual to be on this committee. And we knew each other maybe in pair wise combinations, but this group had not, never gotten together until our first meeting. And we've, we've never taken a vote. We've never had a minority position and have worked incredibly collaboratively. Michelle Ellison, who submitted a letter is a climate and energy powerhouse. And she's been instrumental in promoting the Clean Power Alliance, 100% clean energy in Ojai throughout Ventura County and beyond. Phil White, who's here on the, on the meeting, was trained as an aerospace engineer. He was early on when the Ventura County established an air pollution control agency and separated from the LA basin, he was the air pollution control officer for the county. And he's currently on the Ventura County Planning Commission and dealing with the general plan for the, for the county in a very important role. Jim Selman is an international coach and consultant of C suite and board level companies specializing in large scale system change. And and he has absolutely taught us about the term alignment and and helped to guide the discussions of this group.
We lost you, Steve.
Biologic and and sequestration work. And I'm a former faculty member of environmental health, which is one of the reasons I've been following this whole COVID thing. And I've worked on climate science since, I hate to admit it, the mid 1970s. And so it's, it's close to my, my heart. Let's go ahead and go ahead a couple of.
Yeah, this is Johnny. You, you faded out on us there when you started to speak with Brian. Why don't you repeat what you were saying about him?
Oh, I'm, I, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, Brian, Brian Holly is an ecologist and envi- environmental scientist. And he is a principal with PAX Environmental, which is a local environmental consulting firm. And he's the person that we rely on for carbon sequestration and and things having to do with capturing carbon through trees and and other other, other means. And so the things that we've done in this, in the six months that we have seen ourselves as, as an extension of James' staff, we've, we've tried very hard to be helpful to the staff and not a burden and cost to the staff. So we've been preparing materials, including a letter on the county draft environmental impact report, which is now going to be kicked back to the planning commission sometime next month, if it goes on schedule. We've initiated discussions with the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District on developing a greenhouse gas inventory for the city. We've also, in your consent calendar today, we prepared a letter to go to the California Air Resources Board on their pre-rulemaking on small engine conversion. And this really follows from the, the Public Works program of converting all of your lawn and garden equipment to battery electric. Go ahead and go forward. Two slides, if you may.
Two slides?
Yeah.
Oh, I went the wrong way. No, that's weird. Oh, okay.
So what I, what I want to discuss here is what we did in coming up with our recommendations. So there are an awful lot of things that are related to climate and the environment. We had the meeting, half day meeting at the high school with, with the community and compiled a large list of suggestions. What we decided to do is to focus this phase of our efforts exclusively on mitigation measures rather than adaptation measures. And in our report, we, we talked about the difference between proactive versus reactive in the global pandemic. So for mitigation, it is addressing specifically the cause of climate change. It's what can we do as a city to reduce our greenhouse gas impacts? Or reduce the amount of carbon dioxide that we emit and methane and other gases that are, that are affected? As opposed to adaptation. An adaptation for climate would be if you're on the coast, either building seawalls or moving inland. For the Ojai Valley, it might be if, as the climate changes, essentially we are victims of that changing environment. What happens when the agriculture that we have now is not compatible with the climate that we're in? So we would be adapting to that. We will need to adapt regardless of anything else. So our focus is on what we can do as leaders to mitigate that and to take an aggressive stance at that mitigation. So the next thing that we did was we focused on measures that would have the greatest greenhouse gas reduction potential. There are lots of things that are good to do that may have sort of nibble at the, at the borders. But we tried to focus on the major sources of greenhouse gas in Ojai. And then finally, because we're just four plus square miles, we were focusing on policies and programs that were within the addressable focus of the city of Ojai. So those, that was the filter that we, we used. There are going to be community members who may feel that their pet idea was not included. And there was really no affront in that. We were really trying to follow this filter so that we could provide you with the most impactful ways of the city addressing climate. So any, any questions on that and? Go ahead to the next. So I.
I, I have questions, but we'll wait till the end, I think, is best.
Okay, well, and and I'm not sure that we want to get in to the weeds today, especially if we want to try and keep to that time schedule. So we addressed the issues that were raised in our charter. So for vehicles and internal combustion engines, we have to be aggressive if we're going to actually meet the goals of, of Paris Accords and and, you know, stop more than one and a half degrees C increase in, in, in temperature. So we envisioned in Ojai that would eventually be all electric vehicles. I mean, that's happening faster than was ever anticipated. But it was, if there are things that can be done in terms of policies that will support and and accelerate that. I'll, at the very end, I will talk about the small gas engine issue because we've already had a big impact at the state level at the California Air Resources Board. So we also talked about energy. I mean, there is still so much that can be done in energy conservation. We've got a lot of homes that have single pane windows that are, are leaky. There is much that can be done with advanced building electrification, installation of solar with, with battery backup. There is a lot of, there are a lot of tools that are out there and available to us. The issue is, is, is cost and availability. So part of our focus had been that as we come out of this pandemic and the economic consequences of that, this is, we're not done with the economic consequences. And this is likely, when it's done, to look something closer to the depression of the, of the 30s. Things are going to have to be done to accelerate the, the economy and to get back on our feet. So our committee is, is looking at ways in which the city of Ojai can be shovel ready with a number of these projects so that when funds are available at the state, federal level, we're, we're ready to jump, jump to that with, with programs in hand. Next slide. So on carbon sequestration, I think, I think the council has already agreed that you want to renew our international tree status. One of the easiest ways of capturing and sequestering carbon out of the atmosphere. So it's sort of the opposite of the generation is through planting of trees. So we encourage that that be done wisely with, with native plantings and, and trees that are known to hold carbon for, for generations. In terms of city operations, we want to encourage the city to electrify city buildings. And I think Michelle Ellison had put in a request for, for doing that. It, you know, we're, doesn't appear that we have the budget for doing that immediately, partly due to circumstances. To harden the city buildings with solar panels and battery backup systems. I think the city has already committed that on replacement, the vehicle fleet should be electric vehicles whenever possible. And to make climate mitigation a high priority. And finally, we added in the next slide. I'm, I'm skipping a couple of things that the city, I mean, we punch way beyond our weight. And that we ought to be taking the, 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 the will of this, of this city, the emphasis on green living, the emphasis on, that we've already had on energy conservation and on climate mitigation. And use that to advocate outside of, of, the, outside of the city. And skip two more slides. I was going to just quickly show, skip one more slide. Something that, that happened, and this is where the city of Ojai punches beyond its weight. We were involved, when we applied for the grant from the Air Pollution Control District for converting Greg Grant's Public Works Equipment to battery electric. At that time, the California Resources Board was projecting that by this year, by 2020, this total emissions from small engines, these are under 25 horsepower, mostly used for garden, lawn and garden equipment, would exceed the emissions of all passenger cars in the state of California. Well, the manufacturers of the small engines pushed back and said, we don't believe your data. Could you do some more emission testing and could you do some in use surveys? So they contracted with Cal State Fullerton to get in use surveys of commercial and residential users. And they did some more emission limits. And at a meeting on the ninth of this month, they came back and said, oh, by the way, we crossed that line in 2016. So with the next slide, what they have done in part because of the success that we had in Ojai is that they're proposing at California Resources Board an extremely aggressive rulemaking. So they're going to establish new standards this year. The emission standards tighten in 2023. By 2025, if you want to have a piece of equipment, it has to have zero emissions. And there will still be some lawn and garden and small equipment that is manufactured because they have emission credits allowed, which is where the credit use is showing up at the top. But by 2028, the proposal, if it goes forward, is that there will all of that equipment, everything under 25 horsepower, will be zero emission equipment. That means just battery electric. And so there was some discussion at that carb pre-regulatory essentially hearing or discussion on the ninth. And someone who was a manufacturer said, well, is there anywhere in California where this has been done? And the, the staff of the California Resources Board said they believe that Ojai and South Pasadena have both done this and we're happy with it. And I was able to type in a note saying, not only were we happy with it, but we've passed and have had in effect since April 27th, a ban across the board in the, in the city. So these are the kinds of things that we, as a small city, can do. It's going to have to be done in many, many different places if we are not going to, you know, crawl out of this pandemic with a tiny virus and be facing yet another major global crisis without being proactive about how we address it. So what we plan to do now with the list of recommendations that we've made is we will reconvene as a committee and come back to you with some things that we think within the current budget and, and environment can be implemented immediately. And we are also prepared to turn those recommendations into policy statements that can become either a part of a climate element in the general plan for the city or can be folded into other, other elements. And that will be, you know, interactive with the, with the council.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you, Dr. Colome. Honestly, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
I'll start if you want, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I never go first, so this is weird. First of all, Steve, thank you so much. I am so impressed by this report. Everything we've gotten back from the Climate Committee has been so professional and well done. It, it is just, it's, it's, it deserves a compliment. I want to say I appreciate what I would call the aggressiveness of the report, knowing that all we can do is say no to things. We need to have everything on the table to say yes. And I appreciate that that is part of this. And I think, you know, I think that's the right way the committee should have done it. So I agree with that. Obviously, not everything in this report can be adopted in a short term or, you know, whatever that is. But it's all on the table, and this is what we were looking for. This was my intent when I approved.
This was my intent when I approved the Climate Committee and when we called it an emergency last July. This is what I was looking for, and I really wanted to just say thank you. First, my quick question is, and I think I already know the answer, but it sounds like we have the right makeup of the committee, of the right role players who have the right expertise to do this. Is that correct?
Oh, I, I think absolutely. I, I mean, and we're still open to input from, you know, any others who can provide that input. But, you know, I think that's why we'd like to have this report out now so that if there are other members of the community that have something to contribute in, in writing or in response to what we've done, that it's, it's out there and available for, for that kind of input.
Perfect. And that, and it sounds like too, I think, you know, and I, and I know this is something that Councilmember Francina has brought up a lot about the paradigm shift. But I think one way it's articulated in this report is, climate may not be something we can just respond to adaptively. Adaptation will not be sufficient. That only through mitigation on the front end can we really deal with this problem in a whole. Now, it doesn't make it quite as boiled down as that. But Dr. Colome, is that the opinion of the committee?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I, I think that's a good way to look at it, that, you know, we can't wait till we can hunker down. We got to get something done, and we got to start thinking about it, and we got to start leading in it. And this is what that is. You said a number of times, Ojai punches above its weight. I, I not only love that statement, other than, other than somebody probably can't punch above his own weight. I do appreciate that. And I, I want everybody to just know, my involvement on the APCD, and I've said it a million times, that we have got to take credit and own it for where we have been in front of these issues. And I, I love the anecdote about a CARB. If anybody ever hears the California, let's say it wrong, Air Resources Board, also you hear CARB all the time, that's the same board. I love that it came up and that Ojai was delineated because I say all the time, you get in a group of everybody in the state or a bunch of different cities, that four-letter one that has three vowels and one J, they can't pronounce right, we stand out all the time. And it's not always just because of the way we're spelled. So I love that that's being put forward as well. The other thing I, I just want to comment on is, you talked a little bit, just to touch on, and some of this report talks about, which is interesting to me, how we're going to deal with post-COVID and how, you know, this situation, this emergency, and how we might evolve from it and not go back to the same normal. Doesn't mean we're going to suddenly uproot and change everything, but it does give us opportunity. It gives us some data. It gives us a few things that we wouldn't have gotten any other way, especially inside of the reducing greenhouse gas through traffic, through vehicles. Now, I didn't see it touched on here, and it, maybe it's tucked into, you know, one of the many ideas in here. But I, I want to make sure, and it may not be something the Climate Committee really needs to say, but Ojai should capture its tourism opportunity and match it with the opportunity to do work away from having to drive, even staycations or other vacations where you are not traveling. I think that's all tied into this. We have a unique opportunity in Ojai to be able to kind of help our own community and during the week hotel environment here as a tourist town, but also promote not traveling to work every day. You know, if you drive to, from LA to Ojai one day and you don't drive to work for five days, we're taking that car off the road for those other five days. So that can be a secret way, and especially if it's an electric vehicle, to try and do that. That's one other thing that, the Climate Committee is obviously deeper, you know, taking a deeper dive in this. But I do want to make sure we dovetail some of our kind of uniqueness of Ojai and that tourist environment to how we can maybe promote that. And then one other thing, well, and now as I was saying, and you, you described it as, you know, the, the New Deal coming out of World War II, and now we're looking at a Green New Deal maybe come out of COVID. Those types of crises do end in a opportunity to reinvent or relook at some of those things. So I really appreciate that angle that the committee took in this report. The one other thing besides, and all I'm trying to do is say thank you a lot and offer two other ideas. Again, the idea of working away from home, I think, is important. The other one is, I'm working on a project now, and I don't know if the Climate Committee or some of the other council members are aware. Some of you might be aware because you may have been on the council when this got passed on a quiet night a while back. But there's the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, or the PACE program. And through the state, what you can do is on new buildings or on building retrofits or, or rebuilds, or even in residential as well as commercial, you can apply for funding where they actually sell bonds, if it's over enough money. They, they lend you the money, and then they assess it on the property through property taxes for specific clean energy, green building materials and ideas. I, I've learned a lot more about this over the last month. And I, it's a wonderful program that the city happened to sign up for before I was a council member. I just want to make sure that the committee's aware that that's in our toolbox as well because not every community, not every city has gone through the process of passing an ordinance and getting that up and working. We're ready, we're, the table's set for that if anybody comes in. I think one real simple idea towards mitigation is, any new projects that come in the city should at least be made well aware of this program and how it could affect them. So I think that's really fantastic. So I, I obviously, you know, as I said, this is not an edict of everything we're going to be able to do. This is the wish list of what we can do. This is what we need. And I hope we can soon start figuring out what the low hanging fruit on this very comprehensive list is and getting it implemented. And I am excited about being able to be on APCD while this is going on and continuing some of these things. And obviously, we're going to keep working on getting the inventory done and some of these requests from.
Thank you, Ron. I got my.
Time. Was that for me, Johnny? Mine's still.
Thank you. And thank you, Steve, for the, both the report and all the work. That is an exceptional group of people that were put together to work on this. That, I'd like to add one thing, and I'm going to, I hope I don't botch this up too badly. But Michelle, if she was with us, could, she's one that's really doing the work on the Clean Power Alliance. But here are some numbers for 2019, things that we achieved by going the 100% default. About 95% of the electricity came from the 100% green power contract that we now have, that provides energy to our city. The 95%, she said here, that the residents and the businesses purchased 23 million kilowatt hours of electricity from the alliance. And of that, 95% was 100% renewable energy as well as clean energy with zero greenhouse gas emissions. By choosing CPA 100% clean power, Ojai reduced its greenhouse gas emissions by more than 5,000 metric tons in less than one year. And then she, this is the part, I'm not quite sure whether it's cumulative or three different examples, but it says, this is the equivalent to about 1,100 passenger cars off the road, eliminating electricity consumed by 857 homes and the planting of 83,739 trees. I'm not sure how they got the measurement on those trees that carefully, but anyway, it's a whole lot that was done, you know, you know, we're sort of the, the mouse roared in the city of Ojai. And this is, a lot of this originates back with Dr. Colome and Phil White, who have been working on this for years. So thanks, everybody. Anything else from the council, from Steve, before we move on? I see a hand from Suzan.
I, I just want to repeat for the public that the report that we're discussing is going to be online, correct?
Yes, yes. It will be posted on the Climate Committee's webpage tomorrow.
Okay, and how about, we can also, can we also post the slide chart?
Uh, if, if Dr. Colome is okay with that, it's his intellectual property.
Well, it, it, it's absolutely fine. There's one, the, the pie chart slide should, should come out, actually.
Okay.
It's premature.
Okay.
I want to see all the slides. And then I, if the rest of the council agrees, would you do, after this is all posted, would you do at, at least a short press release on reporting this to the public? And then my last question, Steve, are you, you're, you're still having Zoom meetings through the summer? Is that correct? Or?
We, we are. In fact, the, Phil, do you remember when our next meeting is? It's the, I think, next week.
Yeah, I think we have a meeting next week, Wednesday, 10 o'clock. I would like to add a comment if I might. Steve, you did a great job on presenting and summarizing what we've been up to. So I don't have much to add to that. I do want to say that it's been a real pleasure to work on this committee. It's in my heart to do something about the climate change. And I know that's the case for all five of us. You really do have an exceptional committee. And I hope you will be open to having a study session and, and dive into the weeds of this stuff and, and also be prepared for us to come back to you from time to time with maybe some specific recommendations, as we've already done, for things that the council can approve that will help head, head us in the direction of, of solving this climate crisis. Thank you for, for your leadership in this. I have to say that Ojai is, is really out there, leading the pack. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Phil.
I didn't get to finish. I didn't finish, but I, I, I agree with what Phil said. I want to support that, that we move forward with, with what you recommend. But I wanted to make sure that the Zoom meetings, that the, that the meetings continue to be posted on the city website because I think we're a little bit behind. Last time I checked, as far as posting the meetings, James. Because, and, because the public can still, if I called you up, I could, you could give me the code, right? If I wanted to sit in on a meeting, is that, is that correct? Can you hear me okay? Or am I?
Yeah, I hear you. I, I think that's the, a question for the committee, if I'm understanding. Is, is, are, or is the Zoom information available to the public? I'm not sure if, if that is available.
I think we're willing to have the, the public sit in and, and listen to what, what our deliberations are.
I want, after you post this, I want to call, make sure the school board, you know, is aware of the, of the report and the Chamber of Commerce. I think that there's several entities in town that would want to read this report. I'd like all the commissioners to read the report.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, I, if I can just comment to what Suzan said. Suzan, I completely agree. I've actually asked APC this a couple of times about the Ojai Unified School District. But there, this is about electrification. There's some other options that they had. There's carbon things they put on school buses and stuff. But I, I definitely think it's worth our committee and our council in, you know, trying to communicate with the school district about what's available. And then I'm happy, or I think any of us would be, to coordinate with APCD to try and help the school district take care of what, what they can on this same issue. So I think that's going to be, you know, I'm, I'm interested to see that happen whenever we can.
Yeah. Great, great. Thank you. Great report. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Bill. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Are you, we now ready for the Animal Services Contract Discussion?
Yes. Thank you. And just briefly, this was on consent last meeting, and I believe it was on consent. And we discussed it. The brief summary is that the Ventura County Animal Services has, is going through a process. They're looking closely at their costs. They're analyzing those and putting together a new five-year agreement for the eight cities within the county that they serve, including Ojai. Their goal is to simplify the budget process and make it clear what cities are responsible for, for what portions of the costs. And so they've done that here. They, at the last council meeting, we reviewed and we noted that it was a, an increase in our costs and that, and council then gave direction to staff to meet with the Ventura County Animal Services and review and discuss. So we did that. We spoke with the County Animal Services and voiced some of our concerns. Obviously, some of the concerns were that every agency currently is, is looking at reducing costs. And so we noted that and noted concerns about assuming cost increases for five years and, and several other items. In short, the Animal Services had noted that eight of the 10 cities in the county have already, or I'm sorry, seven of the 10, seven of the eight cities in the county that they serve had already agreed to the contract. And, and due to the, the timing, they had requested that we execute this agreement. They noted that there's a 90-day opt-out so that if we have concerns and we wish to opt out of the contract, we have that as an option still. But unfortunately, from our perspective, is the, their, their feeling at this point is that every other agency signed the same contract. So they had concerns about reopening discussions for, for just one city at this time. So the contract is back before you, and we had recommended that we sign due to the timing and then explore alternative options and return to council at a, at a future meeting.
Okay, I move to approve.
Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
I'll second it for a discussion.
A second's good enough. Now discussion follows.
I'm not asking, well, I'm not asking, I don't want there to, anyway. Yes. I, plus I have a question. And this may be for Matt or for staff. In 6.2 in the contract, it limits it to upon mutual agreement of the parties. It can be renewed up to five consecutive one-year parties. I do this for a living, but I'm asking Matt. Matt, that doesn't sound like it's an option that are, means we can't, it doesn't mean we can just renew it each year for five years. It seems like it has been mutually agreed. In other words, if they want to increase the, they say, no, we won't do it next year, and they want to increase the price again another 25%, we don't have any locked-in legal authority to be able to keep this going, correct?
No, it also raises to me the question of, 6.1 provides a term through 2025, an initial five-year period. Is the renewal under 6.2 five more periods? A five more, five more one-year periods? So a 10-year period? Or do they read those two as stacking up together to be one-year renewals within the existing five-year period?
Yeah. I, I thought it was a little ambiguous. And, and I, when I read this at our last meeting, I thought it was our, I, I thought it was essentially our option each year moving forward to keep the same contract. And under the increase, even though it's extensive, if it couldn't be increased for five years, it made a little more sense. Reading this a little, you know, reading it again, it seems more like no. If next year they didn't want the contract, they can unilaterally say no. It requires mutual agreement. And they could just say, no, next year it's another 25%. We're stuck in the same position. Right?
But we have, we have a 90-day option on each of these, on, on each of these contractual moments, whether it's five years or whether it's one year. We have a 90-day out.
That's correct. Section 3.1 also speaks to an annual level of service request form, which putting implies that section 6.2 is intended to be five one-year periods during the original five-year period. But as Councilmember Hany noted, we do have a 90-day termination clause if in any given period we don't agree with the current terms, their performance or their proposed terms for next year. And the same right applies to the county as well.
We have to agree to it, and then 90 days later, we can unagree to it. But we still have to mutually agree to it each year. And then we get 90 days to change our mind. Right?
And it's not 90 days to change our mind. It's, we always can change our mind. We have 90, it's the 90-day.
90-day out.
Notice information.
Done.
Thank you. Okay. And Randy, you're right. Sorry, I didn't mean 90 days from the beginning, 90 days at any point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready for a vote?
I think I'll say is, is there any alternative to this?
Apparently not, 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 not with the timeline we've got, so.
Not readily available.
Right. I believe that's part of the motion that, that was just made and seconded, that the city manager is going to explore alternative animal control options, which I think is extremely important because two comments I want to make. You know, one is this tyranny of standard, right? Every city had, every, I've made, I made this comment, I said I'd come back to it. This idea that a county is going to say, every one of our clients, and I want to emphasize that word, client, you don't go to your, all your clients and say, we're going to treat you all the same. you don't go to your, all your clients and say, we're going to treat you all the same. We're not the same. And we may have different relationships with different partners in terms of supplying these essential services. So I really, I'm really kind of wanting to um, a a a urge that we really look at the alternative options. And then we really um, try to work on this side, you know, moving the county away from this idea that every uh, every arrangement with every client has to be the same. Um, I I, I just don't like that and I think, I think that we can come up with some creative ways of um, uh, supplying some of these uh, services and I hope that we aggressively uh, look at at the options, even if it's not a complete separation, but at least really push the idea that we might have partners in the community that can do things in different ways that other cities uh, may maybe be choosing to do it.
Yeah. Mayor?
Yes.
One thing that makes Ojai different is that we actually have a spay and neuter ordinance. And not every city has adopted one for various excuses. I brought this up at the county meetings because other cities have have more of a problem with uh, you know, unwanted uh, puppies and and kittens. And Ojai, I think is doing a better, a much better job in that regard. Yeah, so.
Are we ready for a roll call? Do we need a roll call on this?
Uh, yeah, we do because of the amount of money involved.
Money, okay. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Blatz? Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay, uh, motion's passed and you got your direction, James. Uh, let's go to number six. Individual campaign contribution limits.
Thanks, and I am gonna let uh, the city attorney um, address this.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Very briefly, what's before you is an option to adopt a resolution that would impose local campaign contribution limits. You have four options, and this is all triggered by Assembly Bill AB 571, which imposes a state default campaign contribution limit of $3,000 per contributor, per candidate for local elections starting January 1st, 2021. So we're not talking about the election coming up in a couple of months in November. It starts January 1st, 2021. Staff's recommendation is that you affirmatively adopt by resolution that default limit, $3,000 per contributor, per candidate, starting January 1st, 2021. And that $3,000 limit gets increased every year uh, by the FPPC for inflation. Um, I'm sorry, not every year, um, every other year. And your other options are to do nothing and let the state rule apply by default or to adopt a higher, lower, or no limit. That's the, my brief presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Summers. I notice this just limits the um, number, the the contribution to person. It doesn't specifically, I looked at some of the other ordinances around on this in the state of California. And they are very specific about political action committees and not just persons. Uh, in other words, uh, I don't see, now, we have the option of limiting by person and by political action committee, do we not?
Yes, you do have that option if you wish.
Okay, and uh, just to comment before moving forward, I I might be interested in a limit, but much lower than this.
And what is the default of the state, Matt?
$3,000.
Okay.
For person, if I could just add, our recommendation is based on adopting the state default. We recognize this is an inherently political decision and thus it is your choice if you want to make a different, a different decision, but we wanted to bring you the state default.
I understand.
So Matt, this would be an individual compa- uh, contribution in any given election cycle to one candidate.
Correct. Yeah, and as noted by Councilmember Wirick, it could be extended to be not just natural persons, but also political action committees also set for a limit to per candidate per election.
Now, are there other categories we're allowed to do, like corporations, businesses, PACs? I mean, are they all, any, any categorical, non-discriminatory, non-legal discriminatory entity or uh, classes, okay?
Yeah, you could, you could expand it. And if I could suggest, if there was interest on the council in expanding beyond the state default, it might make sense to um, appoint a either direct staff to work on some options or appoint a subcommittee of two councilmembers to take a look at those options and bring it back. Unless you wanted to move forward tonight.
Yeah.
Well, I, I can tell you this, I've, I don't know how many campaigns I've ran in town. I've never got it. I've never even, I don't know. I've never in five campaigns, I've never seen a donation over $3,000 or anywhere near it, so.
You know, but there have been, Ryan, there have been issues, you know.
No, no, I, I wasn't saying we shouldn't do anything.
Oh, I, I'm just saying, there's been issues uh, in other parts of these counties where cities have been kind of chugging along like we have. And all of a sudden, a group of uh, financial uh, you know, well-heeled people decide they want to influence city council and they, they jump, you know, all of a sudden, there's tens of thousands or or more dollars when there never used to be anything. And I, we saw this also at the county in terms of the uh, the oil and gas pack. We had much more money trying to uh, you know, buy buy media and influence. I, I'm really interested in something more comprehensive with much lower limits personally.
Is anybody ready to propose that tonight or shall we postpone this? Or is there a time limit when we have to adopt this?
The only time limit is if you don't adopt something by January 1st, then that, then the state default takes effect automatically.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be for the election this year, but I have a couple of questions if you don't mind, Mayor. I I just want to find out a little bit more and if we're going to postpone it, that's okay. Um, have other communities, Matt, have they gone with, I mean, what what have you seen? What's the, what's the playing field look like for other communities that have passed? Any alteration from the state level?
I mean.
Lower, has it been higher?
It's a bit all over the map. It tends to map on, small cities have either done nothing or the state limits. Larger cities with more established uh, political regulatory environments have adopted uh, comprehensive scheme. Um, I haven't done a comprehensive survey of Southern California cities, but it tends to be the ones that have separate rules, or your Santa Monica, Los Angeles, uh, Pasadena. Um, I'd be happy to take a look at the other cities in Ventura County. I don't, to my current knowledge, none of them have any limits, although I'm not sure about Ventura.
Looked at the FPP site today and I believe the city of Ventura and the city of Simi Valley have passed separate uh, limits and they're much lower than this.
Thanks. Thank you for that additional information.
Well, in the interest of an opportunity to just get it over with so we don't bring it back to a later agenda, I'll make a motion to set it at $1,500.
Or even 1,000, either one, but yeah. What do you think, Bill?
What are the implications, what are the implications of that?
You know, nobody can give you more than $1,500 than one.
Yeah, but with Citizens United and these other things, I used to serve on the Political Practices uh, Commission for the County, and when Citizens United came in, it seemed like everything was after the fact. You know, the horse was out of the barn, uh, the penalties were next to nothing. Who who's going to police this?
So that's one of the other questions. As staff recommends it, we would leave it to the FPPC to police. The FPPC has said that if you adopt uh, something other than the state limit, they're like, not likely to enforce it. Uh, I'll add that they're probably not likely to enforce it really at any level, um, unless you hit the the newspaper. So that would be one of the questions. If you wanted to adopt a limit lower than the state's limit, then what do you want to look, what kind of resources would you want to put to enforcement? It's typical to set a fine of, uh, fine, the question would be what amount you'd want to set. So if you wanted to set something different than the state limit, we can take a look at that. Um, by default, it would be punishable as a misdemeanor. Um, and we could adopt additional enforcement options.
Now, Matt, would this be enforceable outside of the Citizens United non-directed by a candidate PAC decision? I mean, this is only for money directly to the candidate that's directed by the candidate. Does Citizens United still give an unlimited, a kind of a, this this cap would not be for non-candidate-directed expenditures?
Correct. Citizens United, in short, protects the right of an individual to spend as much money as they want to influence an election, provided they don't give it directly to a candidate. Um, so you'll recall, even in the federal election, you could only give 32,500 to a federal candidate for office in any given election, but you can give unlimited amounts to a political action committee independent from the candidate. And that's where Citizens United comes in. So this doesn't, isn't uh, overridden directly by Citizens United, but of course, the the um, the rule remains that that you can spend as much money as you want to influence the election under current Supreme Court jurisprudence.
Johnny, just to your question, I think this is, there's different categories. It doesn't change anything with Citizens United in the PAC, super PAC system of non directed from a candidate expenditure, but it would.
I understand that. My concern, Ryan, is this, that if it does not, if there's not a police, an effective policing uh, measure or agency of some sort, uh, the, what Bill was concerned with, the big money from out of town or new arrivals that want to pump a lot of money in, it uh, they can still do that and it just limits the locals from fighting back. So it seems to me that it, at least I'm not prepared to vote on it tonight without knowing a bit more, but if the council would like to move you, if you've made a motion, is there a second to Ryan's?
I, I'll tell you what, if if, you know, based on what I said, I'll rescind my motion. We can get more information. I was just thinking slash near and half and making it easy so we didn't kick the can down the road. But I I do agree, you bring up a really good point, Mr. Mayor, is that I didn't think about how it could unduly imbalance and outside influence to what the local influence could do, but I I also think that the local influence is protected by the lower amount, right? I mean, at least they can't give it directly to a candidate. And in our local elections, I mean, I I've never seen a donation over $500 in any local election I've ever been involved in, personally.
Okay, well, I have.
So, um, you know, uh, I I'm, I'm, I'm prepared to decide to lower it, but I I'm happy to wait if that's more of a.
Well, no, if the council's ready to go, that's all right. Don't, don't let me be the one because I'm not going to be in the game much longer as you probably all suspect.
One option would be to adopt a lower limit tonight and staff will bring back some options on enforcement of that lower limit.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor, can you see me?
Yes, there's him.
You know, I, I'm sure you're all aware of this, that anyone at any time can can look at our campaign donations, correct? Because they have to report it every six weeks or whatever. And you'll call that a certain person got, or you know, we suspect who it was. I, I am, during the death of my father, I failed to report that airplane banner that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And it cost me several weekends of meticulous, uh, you know, record-keeping to the uh, fair political practice to, to show that no crime had been committed. So, you know, there is already policing from the community, is what I'm trying to say. The community likes to see what, who's donating what and, you know, they, so isn't that a form of policing?
Not a very effective one, but yes, it is, it's an effort.
A form.
They can see if somebody's trying to give us more than whatever amount, you know, that nobody.
If the council is prepared to go ahead, it's okay with me. I'm just denouncing that I would, I I will abstain without the, you know, it, I I just don't want to disadvantage us from outsiders or big money because sometimes this stuff works the opposite way, but maybe not, so.
Yeah, I understand that, sir. I'm not afraid for me, guys. I will, I, I, I am such a proponent of campaign financial reform from every level, at every position we can put it in. Um, I I I I feel obligated to put my money or somebody else's, if you will, where my mouth is on this. That's why I said it and was trying to find a simpler solution. But I do agree, there may be some more complicated issues we need to look at. The other thing I I, as I'm thinking through it a little bit more now too, is um, this doesn't go into effect till after January 1st. After January 1st, we are redrawing our districts in Ojai again, post that. Um, I, I haven't contemplated, in all fairness, I've never ran an election or been involved in an election in Ojai that was with the districts and that could change this, you know, the dynamic could change a little bit. So I would, I'm going to rescind my motion and be prepared to say I'd agree with continuing it to a later day.
Okay. Anything further on this topic tonight?
I have a question of Matt.
Randy's been trying to be recognized.
Okay, I don't see, Randy, I can't see your your hand because your picture's not up. Randy, you you get the shot.
You know, what I was going to do is that we is agree with, it seems like the consensus that we have until January 1st, that I think that we need, we need more information of the pros and cons of what we're trying to achieve. Um, lowering a rate tonight doesn't, doesn't solve anything. It may create a problem. So let's let staff take the time to come back and give us more information so that we can make a better decision or a better choice.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Suzie, you said you wanted to say one more thing?
I have a question. I, I thought it was illegal, for example, for someone to take out a, a full-page ad for a candidate with their own money, not make a direct donation. I thought that was illegal.
So there's a difference between the right to spend the money and the obligation to report spending the money.
Right.
You always have the right to spend the money.
And the coordination of the monies.
Correct. Thank you. So it's, it's uh, you have the right to spend the money, to use your example, taking out a full-page ad. Anyone could do that for any issue at any time. The question is, if that ad is a full-page ad that says, vote for, you know, the bunny rabbit, vote for a candidate, then you have to report that as a donation to that candidate, or more accurately, that candidate has to report that ad as a donation to them in kind, generally. Um, and if it's coordinated with the candidate, if you call the candidate up and say, hey, I want to put an ad up, what do you want it to say? Then you also have to report it as an in-kind donation to the committee. So you have the right to spend the money and take out an ad. The question is whether it needs to be reported. And part of the reporting question determines in part on whether it was coordinated with the committee, with the candidate or not. It may not be reportable to the candidate if it was not coordinated with them, but you might have to report it on your own FPPC uh, contribution forms, depending on the election, the amount of money at stake. Usually the threshold there is 2,000. And the caveat I'll add is that if you're uh, looking for specific advice on your FPPC reporting obligations, call the FPPC. I, my client is the city.
Okay.
And they're, and they're super helpful when you call them, Matt, just so you know.
Oh, I know, yeah, yeah.
Particularly during the pandemic, yeah, right, yeah, okay. Uh, so we're done with it?
So we'll, we'll work on some more information on the pros and cons and on some enforcement tools if we were to adopt a lower local limit and the the pro and the con of doing so. We'll bring that back for your consideration.
And Matt, I'd just add maybe uh, what other communities have done so far. Similar communities and a little idea of where their, where their locations are going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're done with that. Uh, so we go to uh, council member reports. Uh, well, I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll lead off as Mayor for what I just tipped my hand to let you guys know before that. We, we aren't going to have another council meeting until what, uh, what is it, Ryan, three weeks from now?
Three weeks, Mr. Mayor.
Three weeks.
I expect the calendar.
Okay, and uh, my understanding is, is that uh, the filing of or or taking out of papers for the next municipal elections on the 6th of July, is that right, James? Or or Gail?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yes, correct.
I just wanted to let you, it's been a, it's been a great run. I enjoyed working with you folks, but I will not be standing for reelection, so.
So you mentioned us?
Doesn't mean you won't, Johnny.
Um, correction.
Ryan and counts.
Yeah, yeah, I told him I wasn't going to make a career of this and so I'm trying to keep that a campaign promise. Okay, uh, Ryan, you can go, uh, council reports, anything?
Okay, well, I uh, first, I I want to say I am passionate about some of the sheriff's contract issues. Mr. Mayor, I, I, I appreciate you said earlier um, that we have a date and I don't know when that's going to happen. I would love to be a part of it, but I would never in a million years um, not defer to our mayor who has a much more experience and a breadth of knowledge dealing with the county. Um, but I, but I'm.
Tell you what, I would be happy to be your mentor if you'd like to volunteer, participate in that.
Uh, I'd be, I'd be happy to. I I I think I, I am very passionate about um, how we, how we can look at how much we're spending and how we could reorganize, how we allocate that. And maybe there's a time window now that's appropriate for uh, not only asking for some cost reductions, but a reorganization of how those services are handled. Um, and we'll, we'll deal with that later. Uh, as far as, I had a VCOG meeting uh, last week. I sent over to, I think it got out to everybody, was uh, HDL, the the tax um, uh, regu, I don't know what you want to call them, the outsourced tax regulator for almost all the cities in the county. In fact, all the cities in the county except the city of Ventura. Um, was interesting what they had to say about some of the different tax areas where they weren't, weren't hurt and what was hurt significantly. What was interesting is that it was reiterated in this conversation multiple times about how our 2008 recovery after the Great Recession was limited in our county and we were slower to recover because of the building uh, community, because of the builders who couldn't get back to work. Building is not being, isn't, isn't seeing the. Building is not being, isn't, isn't seeing the slowdown that it did in '08, so that's positive for the county. But what was definitely expressed multiple times, in the inverse unfortunately, was that we won't be as bad this time because Ventura County's not as reliant on tourism, except for one city. That's us. And the un, a bashid way HDL communicated it was, if your budget is based on tourism, it's a long time before you're gonna see any type of complete recovery. It's gonna be really slow. The number at VCOG was 70% of people are still unwilling or apprehensive about going into a, a store, a retail store. Uh, those numbers go up into the 80s and 90s when you talk about hospitality. So I just wanted to share that, that what HDL is communicating to all the cities that they work with is be prepared that tourism isn't coming back, uh, quickly. That, that, that's not gonna happen quickly, and we're not sure what the forecast exactly is, other than it's not good. Um, I mentioned the LA Times thing, uh, I mentioned Montgomery Street. Uh, one other thing I'll add, Suzie, you brought this up earlier. I just wanted to say, back in about 2010, 12, somewhere in there, about the, the shade over the bus stop or the, the, the bench. Um, when I was, uh, managing my father's campaign back then, there was an issue that came up in the campaign about the bus stop at the Y. And believe it or not, back then, it was like 100 degrees every day. That was a June election. Uh, he brought it up, and it was a talking point that we had put together. All of a sudden, after a couple of campaign events, there was a pop-up over the bench at a Y. And then later, it was actually built up to where it is now, which looks really nice. I am not in love of pop-ups anywhere, but if it's about people congregating at a bus stop where they need that, it's, it's only, it's, it's, it's a health and safety issue if we don't put shade over it during the summer. And I hope that if it's about a cost issue or otherwise, at least that's an option that, if I recall correctly, nobody, everybody was very thankful that it happened. I don't remember a lot of complaints, even though it was a kind of blue pop-up. At least that's another option versus, uh, waiting for something to be built out.
Right, yeah.
Other than that, I am just looking, because I made some notes, I think that is it. We had a APCD meeting today. It wasn't super eventful. We passed the budget for the upcoming year. Uh, the building that APCD has been working on for years is, is gonna get redone hopefully in the next few months, which is a big, uh, expenditure that APCD has put on, will get taken care of. The one thing I'll add is that we passed another grant for a different city, a, uh, multi-unit building that they're building, adding electric vehicle stations. Just want to remind everybody who's out there, our council and the public, if you have anything you're building and you want to talk about electric charging stations, reach out to the city, reach out to APCD. There's grant money available. We can't promise what we can do. But this is part of how we're gonna change how it works. And, uh, California has really aggressively adopted electric vehicles, so we want to make sure that infrastructure's there. Feel free to reach out if it's something you want to put in to a project.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, Bill, you're up.
Um, well, first of all, uh, Ryan, I, I think the way this is, the stars may be aligning is that I'm looking forward to working on the sheriff's, uh, budget with you, because, you know, I, I was the first to bring this up years ago in terms of researching the issue. And, uh, I've been doing a lot of, of thinking and working on this. And so, uh, I'm looking forward to that since it appears that, uh, Johnny wants to stay away from, uh, intera, uh, personal interactions as much as possible. So, uh, I understand that. I also wanted to state for the record that now that we've heard from the mayor, uh, I've been, um, about that he does not want to continue as mayor, that I'm gonna be, uh, I would say very, very probably putting together, um, a formal intention, uh, to, to run as his successor.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Suzie, you're up. And that sounded like a pregnant pause, but then it, it was the end of the report.
Um, well, a, a question. Is there any reason why both Bill and, uh, Ryan couldn't, uh, meet with James and the sheriff? Both Ryan and?
Oh, yeah. I think that's the intent.
That's the idea.
Yeah, we could do that.
That's the idea.
Yeah, I, I should say, yeah, before, you know, uh, Bill and I met with the city manager and went over this in detail, and he's done a lot of really good research that at least, you know, makes the argument as to, uh, kind of, uh, benefits assessment and how fair share giving, and we're gonna all have trouble. And I, you know, a good conversation with our friends at the county might help that out. So anyway, God bless you, Bill and Ryan, and anybody else who wants.
And we're gonna, you're, you're, the depth of your knowledge and help is, is really important, Johnny, really is.
Okay, Suzie, do you have anything from animal control or wherever you?
No, I just want to, uh, announce that there's gonna be another question and answer session, uh, regarding the Maricopa Demonstration Project. And these are really a great opportunity to ask anything under the sun that may concern you. Um, that's on July the 1st. It's just around the corner, and that's at 5 o'clock. It's a question and answer on the demonstration project. This is a demonstration project on Maricopa Highway will begin while we're not in, uh, while we're on our, our break. You know, it's, it's, it's happening. It's, it's, it's around the corner. Um.
And that's about a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, it's a Zoom meeting. Yeah. Oh, they're always interesting. I go to all of them. And then I did go to, um, a Zoom meeting. Um, it was a presentation by UCLA Anderson School MBA students on their in-depth study of the economics of Ojai conventional versus organic regenerative agriculture. And Steve Colome attended, Patty Pagelin attended, um, a few other people that, uh, that whose name, names elude me at the moment. But, um, that's part of, that was, uh, Steve Colome, you know, was on one of the slides, regenerative agriculture for Ojai. And the students pointed out that without regenerative agriculture, without us facing the consequences of continually using pesticides, depleting the soil, the real possibility is that we won't be able to sustain our orange orchards and agriculture. So we discussed ways to possibly, um, what's the word? You know, there's like, it's, it's difficult, the economics of transitioning to organics was discussed. And they, they recorded it, so I'll find out when you can see the slideshow. It's just, it's one of the key issues facing the future of Ojai, you know.
Thank you. Okay, Randy, you out there?
Yeah, um, you know, it's interesting. I think James touched on the fact that movie theaters might be opening up in, uh, the 1st of July. And, um, we haven't discussed our movie theater in, I don't know how many years, I'm sorry, months. It'd be interesting for James to, uh, maybe get a, touch bases with them, and let's get an idea or maybe an understanding as to what they're doing and how they're doing it, and when we might think our theater might be open. Um, aside from that, we're at the end of the month, so most of our meetings, VCTC and VCOG, or not VCOG, but Gold Coast are at the first of the month. I will say this much, going back to what Ryan was talking to me. There was a joint venture, um, with Gold Coast and Ramps to get those two bus enclosures, the one at, um, Signal and the one at the Y. And, um, I'll take it to Gold Coast if they're our next meeting, if they're the first Thursday of the month. So I'll be, uh, looking at my calendar. I'm hoping it's not yet. So it'll be, uh, July 2nd. And I could ask them regarding, um, how we might be able to get additional covers for some of our, uh, bus stops here in town. So it's just something that we can ask, that hurt.
And in all fairness, Randy, I, I prob, I assumed it was a city thing. It may have, it may not have been, and maybe it was a VTC.
It was Gold Coast Transit. That's your dad was really proud of that.
That's a great idea. Okay, uh, James, your turn.
I don't, I don't have anything to add, thank you.
Okay, uh, future agenda items, uh, we were, the budget's behind us, so I guess in, uh, July or before we go on break, uh, let me know what you want.
We're gonna have the community, uh, lump sum divided, division has to be on the next, uh, meeting agenda.
Mm-hmm, okay.
What, I'm, what, what do you, what does that refer to?
The community organization funding.
Oh, right, okay. Well, we don't have to come up with it tonight. Call James, or call me if you've got something you think is, uh, needs to be talked about.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, one, one, one other thing is my wife keeps asking me, who's organizing the July 4th, um, parade, downtown parade of community members? And we're, we're meeting, and well, we're, we're starting, and how are we gonna parade the community on July 4th, first thing? So I told her, I don't know, I'd ask the mayor if he was coordinating that event.
You want to walk with me?
You can walk, we can talk. Some of us may pedal.
Yeah, you can carry the flag and be sure to wear a mask, okay?
There he is.
Okay, guys, it's been great. It's, uh, 8 after 10. See you later.
Good night.